That's what I'm waiting for a second. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the sunshine notice, please?
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 24, 2025. This is the Jersey City Planning Board meeting with the scheduled start time of 5:30. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, Ellis Belito, as well as posted with the city clerk on June 18, 2025. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Lipsky? Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Stomato? Commissioner Torres? Acting Vice Chair Thakur? And Acting Chair Gangadhan?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum of six commissioners.
Can we swear in the staff, please?
Yes.
Eric, any correspondence?
Yes. So, Item C, Item C under Old Business, Case P 2025-0066, is requesting to carry to July 15. And under New Business, we have Item 18, Case P 2023-0047. They are requesting for, they're requesting to carry to August 12 with preservation of notice.
Until August 12?
Yes, August 12. And we have Item 19 under New Business, Case P 2024-0218, is also requesting to carry to August 12 with preservation of notice. And finally, August, or Item 20 under New Business, P 2024-0102, is requesting to carry to July 29 with preservation of notice.
Okay, so if any member of the public is here on any of those matters that were just called, they will be heard on the date set forth. There will be no further notice. This is your notice, and you should come at that time.
Testing, testing.
I'd also like to request our notice to be marked as B1 for the record.
Go ahead, let's mark it, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. At this time, I would like to do some rearrangements. Instead of going to Old Business, I would like to call in a case that's under New Business, which is Case Number, Item Number 10 under New Business, Case P 2025-0115. It's a review and discussion of amendments to the Jersey City Master Plan regarding the Housing Element and Fair Share Housing Plan, also known as the 2025 Fourth Round Housing Plan. Formal action may be taken. Matt?
Yeah, so we're gonna invite up a city consultant, Elizabeth McManus. And but first, I'd like to have counsel look at the notice before we hear the presentation.
So, Madam Chair, the city has prepared, or city planning on behalf of the board has prepared the notice with respect to this particular item, which is the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. It's commonly referred to as the 2025 to 2035 Fourth Round Housing Plan. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Beth, the floor is yours.
My name is Elizabeth McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S. First, I'd just like to thank the planning board for agreeing to take me first. I really appreciate it. My schedule is, as a planner that's doing a lot of housing plans this month, the schedule is really quite insane, and I have multiple meetings scheduled for the evening. So I really want to extend my thanks to the board for accommodating me. Also, just by way of background, I'm a planning consultant to the city. I've been working with the city for the last several years on a variety of affordable housing matters. For example, I worked on their spending plan that the council adopted earlier in the year, and now, before you this evening, I've prepared Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. This is a housing plan for the fourth round of affordable housing, which begins July 2025, so just a few days from now, and extends for the next 10 years through July 2035. And so the purpose of this evening is to hold a public hearing on the adoption, potential adoption of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And if the board does indeed adopt the housing plan, that means that, and as well as a resolution adopting that housing plan, that means that it can be submitted to the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, which is the state agency essentially that's charged with reviewing and approving housing elements by municipalities. Jersey City is in a different circumstance than many of the other communities in the state that are doing these housing plans. Typically, municipalities have what's referred to as rehabilitation obligation, and then a new construction obligation identifying a number of new homes that, new affordable homes that need to be constructed. However, as a qualified urban aid municipality, what that means in this context is that the city does not have a new construction obligation. Instead, we only have the rehabilitation obligation that needs to be addressed. And so your rehabilitation obligation, just to start there, is 3,733 units. And that's a number that was calculated by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, and it was assigned to the city formally by virtue of an order that was filed or executed on May 1 of this year. That May 1 order assigned this 3,733-unit rehabilitation obligation to the city as your only fourth-round obligation. And so this housing plan, the purpose of it specifically is to secure approval of your housing plan. That's formally referred to as a compliance certificate from the court, and its primary purpose is to simply address how it is that Jersey City satisfies that rehabilitation obligation. And while a lot of municipalities must create a rehabilitation program to fulfill the entirety of that obligation, Jersey City, again, is in a different circumstance in the sense that this city has thousands of affordable housing units. And what that does is it allows us to exercise or to utilize a portion of the affordable housing rules that allow us to use existing and potentially planned as well, but in this case, we're relying upon existing affordable units to meet our rehabilitation obligation. And so what you'll see in the plan is that I've identified that the city has a minimum of 3,993 affordable homes that will qualify for credit and that we can use against that the 3,733-unit rehabilitation obligation. So essentially, we're able to satisfy that obligation with surplus credits as well. In addition to that, the city does have an ongoing rehabilitation program, and included in the spending plan is an allocation of funds for a rehabilitation program, a program that's available for owner-occupied households to apply and to receive funding in exchange for, excuse me, funding for a major building system, perhaps a roof, lead paint removal, HVAC systems. And in exchange for receiving that funding, there's a 10-year affordability control period that's applied to the home, meaning for the next 10 years, the home must be either occupied by that household that qualified as a low and moderate income household, or it must be sold to another household that is also qualified as low and moderate. So that program remains consistent with your spending plan, and it means that the rehabilitation opportunities will continue in the city, but in reality, we have more than enough affordable units that exist today to meet that rehabilitation obligation. And so ultimately, your plan is pretty simple. I'm not here to suggest new zoning provisions, new sites that are necessary to meet your obligation. It's really about taking the work that the city has already done to create affordable housing and use it to meet this component of the obligation in order to secure that approval for your housing plan from the court process. And folks, that is a really brief overview, but I'm, of course, happy to answer any question or to go into any further detail that the board might like.
Any questions from the?
Just thought, to clarify, excuse me. We're just looking at this as we're, Jersey City has been consistent with the, with the plan already, is what you're saying, that we have been complying with the plan, and that's what we're just, we're doing.
Absolutely. You guys are in a great position where you've done a lot of the hard work already by creating these units. And to be fair, it also utilizes some of the, the housing authorities' efforts as well, the affordable units created there. But I'm essentially taking this bank of affordable homes that already exist in the city and applying it to this fourth-round rehabilitation obligation. And so, in order to obtain that compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other board comments? Seeing no other comments, I would like to open for the public. Anyone from the public?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
Matt, I'm gonna wrap it up.
So yeah, there's, there's some really great data in here as well, in the appendix. We're happy to comply with this obligation and fold this into our existing housing element and land use plan and larger master plan division. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion at this time to approve and adopt the review and discussion of amendments to the Jersey City Master Plan regarding the Housing Element and Fair Share Housing Plan, AKA 2025 Fourth Round Housing Plan.
Rock call?
Okay. Acting Vice Chair Thakur?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Just wanna thank you for the work, thank you for the work. As I was looking through this and the information and everything, and I'm very glad that Jersey City has been on top of it, so, you know, had it worked out before. But thank you for getting us to this point. I vote aye.
Commissioner Stomato? Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadhan?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the work that you have done so far on this. I think it's advancing Jersey City to the next level. Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We're gonna go back to Old Business. I'd like to call Case P 2025-0104, which is a one-year extension for preliminary major site plan approval. Address is 75 River Drive.
Now, you're up.
Is that you, counsel?
That is me, apparently.
I thought it was Mr. Loon, fell asleep.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Acting Chair, I guess, is the appropriate term.
Yes, just acting.
Councilman Lipsky, how are you this evening? Good to see you. I like the haircut. I'm a little jealous. Elrider Webster from Connel Foley. I'm here on the extension for 770 Washington Boulevard, formerly 150 River Drive. As you are probably aware, this is a pretty large development. We've got three kind of buildings. We are in the process of putting building permits as of last couple of days. You'll probably see a groundbreaking next week or two, but we do need extensions for the remainder of the project, for the kind of Phase 2 and 3, so we're asking for another year. I think it's, it's a great project, and LFRAC has a, a good reputation for actually doing the things they say they're gonna do, and I'd hopefully ask for a year extension.
Thank you. Any board comments?
Counsel, one with the year run through, do you know?
I'm not sure, man. When, I don't have the resolution. Actually, I can tell you. Let me see if I have it in front of me. Hold on one second. It was approved, it was memorialized June 24. Let's, no, that's today. I'm sorry, that's for, this is for the resolution for today. It was, what condition? It was November 20, it was November 11, 2024, so. 25 to 26, 2022. So, June 26, July, I'm sorry, July 26 through, this July 26 through July 26 of next year. So I think that's the date.
So that would be like a year and a half.
Okay, a year and one month, I guess. A year and one month?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes, that would be what it is. Thank you.
Well, expired in November?
Yes. But it was originally granted in, it was originally granted in, in 20, on July 26, so I'm thinking that the period, the original period would expire July 26, 2025.
Okay.
So I'm saying from July 26, 2025 to July 26, 2026.
I thought you said November.
Yeah, no, that's, that was.
July 26.
Yeah, no.
So July 25 is when it expires?
Correct.
Normally, you guys are after.
Well.
The other people, not you.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
So July 25, 2025 through July 2026.
Correct.
Very good.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open for the public. Anyone from the public?
Seeing no one from the public, I move to close.
I'm handling this one for Cameron.
You're handling this one? Okay, ma'am.
So staff just recommends that all conditions of approval remain in full force and effect, and staff recommends approval of the extension.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair?
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve Case Number P 2025-0104, as presented to our board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo.
All right. Acting Vice Chair Thakur?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Stomato? Commissioner Lipsky?
How could I vote no when I've been paid such great compliments? I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangadhan?
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to say, Eric, your voice is really, really good. I was just listening to her earlier, and I was like, man, the guy has a really nice voice.
I'd like to call Case P 2025-0090. It's an extension for minor subdivision approval. Address is 21-29 Van Reipen Avenue.
Yes, good evening. Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Just an administrative matter, our office actually noticed for this, although I don't believe it's required, but I'll put him into the record since we made the effort.
Well, mark him since you made the effort, counsel. Madam Chair, we're gonna mark the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the extension of the minor subdivision approval as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay, so the application before you is to extend the minor subdivision approval that was approved by this board back in October. So a minor subdivision approval is valid for 190 days from the date of the adoption of the resolution. That expired on May 1. We had made the application for the extension in April, and the reason we're asking for the extension is that the subdivision includes an assemblage of lots, and there's one lot that has not yet closed, so we can't finalize and perfect the subdivision until that transfer's over. And we anticipate that that's gonna close, hopefully, within the next month or two. So this will take, this 190 days will take us to early December. Will absolutely, you know, be done by then, but I know we're, I can represent, we're actually working on a, on a loan right now to, to, that would include the closing of that property, so it is anticipated within the next six weeks.
Any board comments?
Madam Chair, we've dealt with this issue in the past. Statutorily, they have 190 days to what we call perfect the subdivision, which is to get it into the county registrar and recorded within the rolls. You know, the subdivision doesn't go away if it's not recorded within that 190 days, but if counsel were to attempt to run down there and the resolutions outside the 190 days, depending on who you get at the county registrar's office, they may record it, they may reject it, and then, of course, when you get into loan financing, sale, et cetera, et cetera, somebody flags it, and eventually, some guy in a windowless room somewhere creates a nightmare for Mr. Harrington, so. I've got no problem extending it the 190 days to perfect the subdivision as they're clearly working towards that.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open to the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Seeing no one from the public, I move to close.
Matt?
You know, I second what Santo said. This is incredibly routine. In fact, I passed by this site the other day and saw that the applicant is diligently under construction with the project, so with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve Case Number P 2025-0090, as presented to our board tonight with the conditions and the staff memo.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Thakur?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Not wanting Mr. Harrington to have nightmares, but sweet dreams, I vote aye. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadhan?
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you. I'd like to call Case P 2025-0085, which is an administrative amendment. Address is 622 Summit Avenue. Right there, attorney?
Yes, thank you. Again, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is for very nominal amendments to the project. You'll see on the agenda, we are reducing the number of units from 209 units to 202 units. That includes taking a studio, eliminating the studio, and creating three-bedroom units within the project, and there are a lot of interior changes that I have my architect here, Mr. Vandermark, to walk through. This is the project that's at the northern end of Summit Avenue, just before Route 139, the Singh Tower, so it's well under construction. This is our, I think, our second or third amendment since the initial approval, so we are, you know, moving, they're moving forward efficiently and hope to complete it soon. So with that said, I do have Mr. Vandermark, if he could show the board what we're talking about.
Counsel, do we mark notice?
Yeah, if we could, sorry. Mark the slide deck as A1. There was no notice for this. This is just a draft on the portal.
That's, that's right. We, initially, I thought this was going to be approved internally.
To clarify, counsel, the scope of this type of memo would usually be approved ministerially by staff, but in this case, since they're reducing the unit count, it requires an A, new resolution, so we thought it would be appropriate for it to go to the board so a new resolution can be memorialized.
Understood.
Thank you. Yeah, if we could mark the slide deck as A1, and if you could describe it before you speak to it, Mr. Vandermark.
Absolutely. I do. Absolutely. Anthony C. Vandermark Jr., that's V-A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K, Principal of MVMK Architecture.
Mr. Vandermark, and your license is still current?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and I'll try to kind of walk through these relatively quickly. We're here for a slight change in density, an actual drop in density from 209 units to 202 units. As Mr. Harrington had previously mentioned, floors 20 through 26 happened to be a small reduction, and we've added three bedrooms and eliminated some studios over there. On top of that, we have some small amendments to the actual plan. And I'll just walk you through those, okay? You know, at the cell level, we did a small expansion where we've added some storage space for the owner. At the first floor, as part of the original application, we had a first-floor leveled viewing platform in the event that the Bergen Arches takes place. We were going to open up this back corner, where my cursor was located, for a viewing platform that looks down into the Bergen Arches. Unfortunately, during construction, we had hit a large boulder at this location, which, you know, prompted us to leave that section in place, the boulder in place, and not jeopardize the actual cliff line there. So what we did was, we actually created a second-level viewing platform as opposed to the first-floor viewing platform that was originally proposed to this board. We did move the mailroom and some small spaces within the first floor. We've added a dog washing station under the doors to the right-hand side here. At the second floor now, you have an elevated viewing platform that is accessed via bridge over the first floor. This is the current photo of that condition, and this will be the finished renderings of that location. Right-hand side is the bridge, and the elevated side here is an outdoor seating area. In the event the Bergen Arches actually takes place, this, the wall adjacent to the Bergen Arches will come down, glass railing, as originally proposed, will be there. Proposed third floor, the spaces of the commercial retail recreational amenity are now defined, and we have some areas as a pickleball court and a bowling alley and golf simulator on this level. Fourth floor, we created an opening for the pickleball court towards the rear at the north side, and again, a little bit more definition yoga studio, podcast, and a lounge to the right-hand side, which is the northern side. We changed some bathrooms, and we added some mechanical closets on some of the middle floors. Fourteenth floor amenity level, a little bit more definition. This is for residents only. There's a gym, a sauna, and a very large lounge to the northern side of the building. Proposed floors 20 through 26, the lower floors have nine units per floor, 20 through 26 is gonna have eight units per floor. We originally had a two-bedroom at 910, a 428-square-foot studio, and then a 907-square-foot two-bedroom, bottom right-hand corner here. Those three units were merged into two, and we have a 1,224-square-foot southeastern-facing three-bedroom. three-bedroom. And then, some of the leftover area, you know, went back to this two-bedroom that expanded at 1,028 square feet. Coming back up, floors 27 and 28, just some really small floor plan changes. Kitchen moved and so forth. Owner's suite, they added an additional bedroom, which is the 29th floor, Mr. Singh. Upper roof, we did alter some of the upper roof design. As you can see now, we have, we do have some outdoor pedestal pavers centrally located, but we have a lot of different green spaces and a lot of change in materials here. The original canopy has been changed to kind of match the definition of the building profile as it rotates. And in plan here, as you can see, we have some wood, some paved areas, and of course, some extensive, extensive green roofing areas with elevated landscape plan for beds. In three dimensions, again, a irregular canopy set. This will not be solid, there will be louvers. And as you can see here in the foreground, some seating areas and some eating areas. Just as a whole, we actually added a slightly more extensive green roofing than what was originally approved. So, therefore, just noting it, we've added an additional 40 square feet of extensive green roof, so the application is actually better. Those are the amendments we have. The exterior of the building has not changed, and we hope to be completed by the end of the year.
Thank you. Any board comments? Is that your, completes your testimony there?
Yes, it does.
At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Seeing no one from the public, I move to close.
Matt?
Staff just asks that all conditions from previous resolutions stay valid going forward in this new resolution?
Yes.
Accepted.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number P-2025-0085 as presented to our board tonight with the conditions and the staff memo and the added conditions stated on the agenda.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Thacker?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Under new business, nine, review and discussion of a certified artist, Sean Lee, Ayohe, Diane Buitrago, and Nolan Lunsford. Formal action may be taken. Matt, is that yours?
Yeah, I'll stand in for Cam, who usually handles these. He's away on vacation. Good, good luck for him. So, we have a certified artist that came from our artist certification board, and they meet several criteria laid out by the artist certification board. We asked that the commissioners reviewed that item and that this board certified those artists so that they might, may be eligible for certified artist housing. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone from public?
Seeing no one from public, I move to close.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number
I'll just item, you can go by item.
Item number nine, review and discussion of
Certified.
Certified artists, Lee, Sia, Sianohe, Diane, Buitrago, and Nolan Lunsford.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Thacker?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Just want to say if, trying to remember these names, two of those artists, oil patents are really, really nice, you know, they really do a good job, and glad to have them in the city with us, here, because very good artwork. So, with that, I vote a big aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadin?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to these artists, and my vote is aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you. I'd like to call case P-23-024, preliminary final major site plan and minor subdivision with C variances. Address is 772-788 Westside Avenue, Jersey City. Mr. Joseph?
Good evening. Stephen Joseph Casano Quigley Trami for the applicant. This is a notice application. I do have my notices here. If we could please mark these as A1.
Ma'am Chair, I'm going to receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 772 to 788 Westside. It's also 461, 457, 445 Fairmount, and 144 and 146 Duncan Avenue here in the city. This was noticed for a prior meeting quite some time ago, has been carried for various reasons through tonight. We are going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you so much. So, this is a two-part application. So, we have a minor subdivision here with some variances, and then we have a major site plan with no variances. The project itself is on the southeast side of Westside Avenue. It consists of seven different properties contiguous that are being consolidated between Fairmount and Duncan, so it's, it's a, it's a large, it's a large site. The applicant is proposing a new five-story building with below-grade parking, ground floor commercial, and 125 dwelling units above. There's, there's no variances associated with the actual construction itself. The minor subdivision does have some variances. This is, there's a property around the corner, 445 Fairmount Avenue. The lot runs, it's very deep, and it runs the entire length of the rear yard of, of the main project. So, what we're proposing to do is take off the rear yard and add it to the main project itself, as you'll see from the, from the subdivision plans. The resulting property, which will be a single-family, two-story house, is not conforming in terms of rear yard lot area and lot depth, but it, it is the typical lot size for, for Fairmount Avenue. And what that does is it gives, gives us a larger rear yard for the main project, and it also gives us some more buffer between the backyards of the residential properties behind us. I do want to make clear that we, we do not need the subdivision for the main project. We could build the building as is being proposed without doing the subdivision, but in consultation with planning, we thought it would be better to have some additional buffer area and a larger backyard. So, we're going to start with engineering because we have the subdivision, so you can see that, and then we'll jump into architectural.
Yes. Melissa McIntyre, last name spelled M.C., capital I, N.T.Y.R.E.
And Melissa, I don't think you've testified before this board before. If you could just confirm your license is current and in good standing, and maybe just some very brief on your educational background.
Sure. So, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my license is in good standing. I hold a bachelor's of engineering and civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology, and I've been involved in the field of land development for over eight years, having worked on projects all throughout the state, most notably in Jersey City, Hoboken, and the Hudson County area.
You qualify.
Thank you. All right, so if you could, Matt, are we?
I hope we don't. I see, yeah.
I'm derailing things already.
Had to be somebody, Stephen.
I know. Chuck's not happy with me right now. So, Melissa, if you could just take us through, make note of the subdivision, where, where that Fairmount Avenue lot is, and then walk us through the civil while, while you're up here in sworn in.
Yeah, sure thing. So, starting off with the existing conditions plan, this is sheet C2 of the site plans that were submitted to the city, just to provide you all with a bit of background on the project site. So, we have frontage on three roadways. There is Fairmount Avenue to the north, Westside Avenue to the west, and Duncan Avenue to the south. In terms of existing development on-site, there are a few commercial uses, notably a hardware store, a deli, and a seafood restaurant. In addition to that, there is an off-street parking area, and on Lot 9, there is an existing residence. So, to discuss Lot 9 a little bit further, I'm going to be pulling up the minor subdivision plan that was prepared by our office and submitted to the city. So, as Stephen mentioned earlier, we are proposing to subdivide this lot into two lots. That way, the rear yard area can be consolidated with the rest of the project site and provide a rear yard for the proposed building. The northerly lot, this will be designated as Lot 9.01. The existing residence, the porch and the patio that are all out there are going to remain, and like Stephen mentioned, we will be bringing this lot into greater consistency with the lot shape and size compared to the neighboring lots to the west. The southerly lot, this is going to be annexed to and part of Lot 65, and this will make up part of the rear yard for the development. I would like to note that we are going to be requesting a few variances pertaining to the lot area, lot depth, and rear yard setback for the subdivision. We do have our planner here tonight who's going to be talking about those variances in more detail. But tying in the subdivision to the proposed development, I'm going to switch back to the submitted site plans and pull up sheet C4. This is titled Site and Landscaping Plan. So, mentioned previously, we will be keeping the existing residence that is on Lot 9, and the remainder of the buildings that are on-site and the associated site improvements are going to be demolished to accommodate the proposed development. So, this development will consist of a five-story mixed-use building. There will be cellar parking with a driveway provided on Fairmount to give access to the parking. There will be commercial space and residential units on the ground floor, and there will be residential units on the floors above. To get into the rear of the site, we are proposing a patio and a lawn area to aid in screening. We're proposing a six-foot-high vinyl fence along the site perimeter. In addition to that, we're proposing a mix of native evergreen and deciduous plantings also along the perimeter of the site to further aid in screening. And one thing I would like to note is that we will be increasing the amount of green space on-site as well as the amount of plantings. So, briefly getting into loading for the development, the city recommended that we provide an on-street loading zone on Fairmount Avenue, so we're certainly happy to work with the city to address this. To touch on the streetscape improvements briefly, so we're providing new ADA-compliant sidewalks along all of our site's roadway frontages. In addition to that, we're going to be milling and overlaying up to the curb on the opposite side of the street for all the roads on which our project has frontage. We're also going to be providing street trees along Duncan Avenue and Westside Avenue. Two street trees are provided on Duncan. There's currently no street trees on Westside today. We are proposing to add eight. I would like to note that we are requesting a waiver for the number of street trees on Fairmount Ave. and Westside Ave. Again, this is just due to the obstructions within those right-of-ways, but we have proposed the street trees to the maximum extent feasible. And again, I would like to note that there's currently no street trees on Westside Ave. Today, and we'll be providing eight. To get into stormwater management for the development, so there's currently no formal stormwater management measures on the site today. Given that we are a major development per the city ordinance, we're proposing a green roof system, which has been designed in compliance with all city JCMUA and DEP requirements. Some of the parameters we looked into for our green roof design, the first was to provide green infrastructure, which we are doing through the proposed green roof. Another parameter we looked into was stormwater runoff quantity. So, we have designed our green roof so that the post-construction runoff rates do not exceed the pre-construction runoff rates at any point in time. We also looked into stormwater runoff quality, which we are exempt from needing to comply with, given that we are reducing the amount of impervious cover and reducing the amount of motor vehicle surfaces on-site. Lastly, we looked into groundwater recharge, which we were exempt from complying with, given that we are within state planning area PA1. So, moving on to the utilities for the building, we are proposing sanitary and storm connections on Westside Avenue. We're also proposing a secondary storm connection on Duncan Ave., and all of the utility leads will connect on Duncan as well, and we'll certainly work with the utility authorities to address any requirements.
So, Melissa, we, we did receive some review letters. Can you just confirm that you've reviewed them? We have no issues working with the review agents to address them?
That's correct. So, we've reviewed the review letters, no issues working with the city to address those comments.
All right. If there's any specific or direct questions from the, from the board about the civil, otherwise, we, we have architect and planning testimony as well.
So, Mr. Joseph, just to be clear, what we're talking about with respect to the subdivision based on the drawing that's up on the screen, the second lot from the top on the left side is the lot described as Number 9, and we are subdividing or annexing off the piece where those landscaping is being shown?
That, that's correct, and you'll see that in the architectural plans as well, but that, that's correct. The top portion of the site plan, where you see the, the greenery designations, the landscaping, that is formally the, the lot that's being subdivided.
Does it go all the way to the building or not really?
That's correct. It goes all the way across. It's, it's a very deep lot.
Okay. And you're lining it up, obviously, with the backyards of
Of the adjacent properties.
On Fairmount.
That's correct. And, and again, the subdivision is, if we did not do the subdivision, we would still not need any variances for the proposed building. It adds some buffer area and a larger backyard.
That makes sense, and obviously, you control that and are able to maintain it.
Question for the witness? The, can you confirm the sidewalk along Westside Avenue, the width between the trees and the building face?
Yes, so we did see that comment come through in one of the review letters. We are providing at least five-foot sidewalk width between the street tree pits and the building. If the board looks favorably on the application, we can certainly update our plans to show those dimensions.
What is the width, though, between the tree pits and the building face?
I would have to confirm, but it is greater than five feet.
Is there a setback from the property line to the building face?
To confirm the setback from the
Is there a setback along Westside Avenue from the property line?
I would have to confirm with the architect, as their office prepared the zoning analysis. I know they will be providing testimony tonight as well.
The dotted line on this C4 is indicating what?
That's the overhang.
The overhang. Okay. Thank you.
Any board comments?
Yes. Going back to the subdivision part where you saying, I'm looking at 8 June, 5 through the trees there, that is the property on Fairmount Avenue that's right behind that line?
So, if you go back to the
I don't see on this where is the line that goes to the property that's over on Fairmount for the subdivision on this drawing. I can see it on the other drawing that you have, that you showed the Thomas Miller. So, I'm, okay. Going back to that, where is it? Where is that other Fairmount property at? It's going like two?
Yeah, so it's roughly along where I'm tracing with the, the mouse right about now.
Yeah, so Commissioner, this, this site plan drawing doesn't show the division line because this is associated with the, it's a site plan for the larger development. The other drawing is the subdivision drawing that shows the dividing line.
Yes, I was just want to make sure how far back it goes to. Okay, now, now I can see it. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
All right, let's get Will sworn in. All right. Let's get Will sworn in.
Yes, I do. Thank you. It's William Weckerman. Last name W.E.C.K.E.N.M.A.N.N.
Mr. Weckerman, I know you testified before this board here. Is your license still current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to answer Matt's previous question, there's a zero-foot front yard setback for the building, and there's six feet, eight and a half inches between the tree pit and the building line.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you again for your time this evening. This is a project that we've been working on for almost three years now, so it's, I'm happy to be here tonight to present it to you. I won't touch on the site work. Melissa gave a very detailed presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that come up. The only thing I'll add with regards to the site plan is just a general comment about the building layout. So the building is oriented north-south. It runs parallel to Westside Avenue. And then it extends back towards the rear property line, and then out over to Duncan. And we looked at a variety of configurations for the building. We looked at a U-shaped building and possibly extending up into this area of the site, but we felt that this increased buffer between the residential houses on Fairmount and the back of the building was a nice and unique feature. You don't often see buildings that have 110-foot rear yards, which is what we have here. So this is a nice, unique amenity to the project, where we're situating the building away from the residential block with the frontage along Westside and the other high-density block on Duncan. These are just our standard details. So I'll start with the, quickly going through the floor plans for the proposed building, starting with the cellar level. So the lower level of the building is predominantly parking. There's 45 parking spaces, 20 of which will be designated as open to the public. We have our utility and trash rooms located on this level, as well as a bike room, and then a public entrance to the garage located on the Fairmount side of the project, along with a management office for the operator, the future operator of the parking garage.
And Will, just before you move on from that page, I think it's worth noting that the reason why there are 20 parking spaces here that are open to the public at no charge during business hours is because there was a deed restriction on one of the seven parcels that made up this lot. And that deed restriction was because the property was formerly owned by the city's parking authority. In order to have that deed restriction released to allow us to develop the property, we negotiated a revised ordinance and restriction with City Council. It was adopted by City Council, which, among other things, required us to have 20 spaces in the garage open and available to the public.
So with that, though, with that, how are you going to manage that? I mean...
So Will could say a couple of words on that. The primary thought is to have a parking company. There's a sister building across the street that also is going to have a garage, but have a... Well, Will, why don't you show where the parking spaces will be? I think it'll make more sense that way.
Yes. So the parking spaces are here, immediately adjacent to the garage entrance. And, yeah, the plan at this point is to have a third-party parking company operate the garage. So they'll have a management office onsite. It'll be fully staffed, and they'll be responsible for managing the parking and the designation of the spaces.
So if it's 20 free spaces, is it 24/7, 365? Is it...
It's during retail hours.
Okay.
Yeah. And this parking arrangement, and there's also a lease agreement with the city, needs to be, there has to be a separate agreement with the city after approval of this application.
So that's a condition, obviously.
Yeah.
Currently, there's a deed restriction on the property.
Well, currently, we have an ordinance authorizing everything that we're proposing. City Council has adopted the ordinance, but it's subject to working with city attorneys on the lease agreement.
Which means the deed restriction is still there until that's done.
It was released and replaced with the new one that allows the development with those conditions.
That was already recorded?
It was adopted by the city. The ordinance was adopted by the city.
Right.
That ordinance, the parking spaces are in perpetuity, but the commercial space is for 10 years?
Correct. We didn't, yeah, that's on the next page. Well, we could talk about that a little bit too when we get to the commercial space.
Understood.
So, okay, so, parking spaces, there are 20 of them, are for the public, not for the commercial spaces?
They're for the public to use to access the commercial spaces. And, but they don't, there's not a validation to that.
How about the workers that work in these spaces? Are they going to be using those parking spaces, or does it...
No. They're not for employees.
They're not for the employees. How does the public know there's parking spaces available for them? As I drive down Westside Avenue, how would I know that?
Good question, Eddie.
Yeah, there would be signage. Will could talk a little bit about that and also about entrance as well.
Yeah, we do have, we're proposing signage on the building. This is like any parking garage in the city, private parking garage, where there'll be signage both on the entrance and then entrance to the garage, and then the public entrance on Westside Avenue. So that's the idea for the garage, is that it would operate just as any...
Most likely, they'll be charging people to park there.
No, no, it's free.
Free parking? And there'll be signage letting people know that there's free parking there?
Sure. Yep. That's correct.
But to Eddie's point, how do you distinguish between an employee, a run-of-the-mill person who just wants to park to go to Lincoln Park, or go in and use the commercial facilities?
So again, that's why we are looking to have a third-party management company with, manage the garage, as opposed to, say, using a ParkMobile-type setup where, you know, it's an unmanned, it's an unmanned garage. So there would be somebody there responsible for, you know, making sure that people were parking.
It wouldn't be, "I'm going on vacation. Let me put my car there, then I could go away."
Correct. Correct.
But I think, you know, not to belabor this, because I think the application's moving fine, but I think if you just did it as a first-come, first-served for whomever. Because I think if any management company tries to ID and go through that process, it's going to, to me, I just can envision chaos.
I mean, I think the idea is we restrict the leases as well, but it was very important to everybody that we spoke to to make sure this is available for the public to use for your charge. So we're trying to honor that.
So that, I think, presents the, to me, the quagmire, is that if you say you're presenting it to the public, and yet you're talking about possible deed restrictions, I mean, I don't know what that encumbers. But if it's just a first-come, first-served, then the management person says, "Okay, you get spot one, you get spot two, three, 20. Lot's full." And then whenever retail shuts down, they're not out, then the management company does what it does.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think ultimately, it's going to be whatever City Council wants us to do in terms of, in terms of the spaces.
Okay.
Thank you. So, moving on to the first floor plan, the entire Westside Avenue frontage is, there's four commercial spaces along Westside Avenue. This space here, Space 3, is designated as the, will be designated to the city. This is the space that's available to them, 2,000 square feet, per the ordinance.
This was, so another request from the city to release the deed restriction was a commercial space in the building for the city to use however they see fit. This will be rent-free, not expense fee. The city has to pay their own utilities and things like that, but rent-free for the first 10 years, and then 50% rent for the, I think, the next 10 years. And that's part of the same ordinance about the parking. And again, that's subject to final lease agreement with City Council.
We also have the entrance to the parking garage on Fairmount, and then a public elevator and vestibule here on Westside to access the parking garage, you know, if you're coming from one of these retail shops. We also have the main building lobby, mailroom, package room, and amenity spaces in this area of the building here. And then wrapping the interior courtyard, we have 10 dwelling units. Moving on to the typical floor plan, each floor has 30 units per floor. I just want to correct, Steve, that we do have 130 units
Apologies.
in the project, which was down from 135 originally. The typical floor is a mix of one-bedrooms, studios, and two-bedroom units. Floors 3 through 5 are exactly the same. The only difference is that the floor plate is a little bit shallower in the back, so we pulled it in a little bit to, again, open up the rear portion of the lot as the building increases in height. The roof plan, we have an amenity space, a rooftop amenity space located at the center of the roof. And we also have a roof deck for the residence use. All of those functions are kept towards the Westside Avenue side of the project, so again, keeping that, these more public rooftop spaces away from the residential side of the building. We also have a fairly large green roof on the main roof as well. The elevations for the building, the exterior design is pretty simple. We're using brick as the primary facade material with aluminum accents. And then we have a GFRC, or concrete panels, for the base of the building. So we have a very well-defined base for the retail spaces with the residential floors above. One of the other things that we felt was important was breaking up the massing of this very long linear building. So we have sections that are brick, and then we have recessed areas, which are using the aluminum panels and expansive glass to help break up the massiveness of the building and reduce the scale a little bit. Design is consistent all the way around the building. The only difference is, once you get to the interior facades, we're replacing the brick with a fiber cement lap siding. But the window pattern is generally the same, and as I said, the design concept is generally the same. These are just two additional elevations, one of the Duncan Avenue facade, and then the back of the building here. Here we have a few details, just showing, again, some enlarged areas of the facade. Another unique design element that we have is this linear, this curved linear canopy, which extends along the entire frontage of the building, which is kind of a nice feature over the retail entrances, and it acts sort of as a cornice or a transition as you, between the residential floors above. This is our sun study, and it, again, just illustrates the point I made earlier about how the siding of the building was designed to maintain this, the buffer space at the center of the project. So the shadows and the effects of the sun on the adjacent properties are minimized to the greatest extent possible. Here we have our standard materials, which you'll see a little bit greater detail on the renderings. I would like to enter this as an exhibit, because the renderings were not part of the original submission.
A2.
Is it just one rendering?
Two renderings. A2 and...
And Will'll just email that to me after the hearing.
Sure. So the difference between what was in the set that was up on the portal was that the project previously had balconies that ran between these recessed areas. So we, in conversation with the neighborhood and some feedback that we received, we removed those balconies, and we added some extensive green roof plantings along this canopy projection, which we think is a nice feature. And then this is just an additional view of the building from the intersection of Duncan, looking north.
And Will, I think something else we discussed is bird-safe glass on the windows.
Yes, we did discuss that, and we will specify bird-safe glass for this project.
That concludes your presentation, Will?
Yes, thank you.
Any board comments?
I have a question for you. I'm liking what you're doing. You got me with the balconies, that's cool, but you did have a little space there that things wouldn't fall down above the doors, and then you got rid of the balconies. I'm like, okay. But just your garbage refuse. I see that every floor has a recyclable area, and then the garbage. That's going to go, somebody's going to bring that downstairs that works for the building, to the garbage area that you have downstairs?
Yes, correct.
Then you have two-yard containers downstairs, which is like the opposite end of the garage. Are they reeling those out to Fairmount, or are they trucks going to go inside and pick them up?
That is a good question. I mean, the plan now is for the refuse to be removed to Duncan, and then picked up on scheduled pickup days.
On Duncan?
Yeah. Sorry. Hold on. Sorry, Westside Avenue.
You, Westside Avenue, and then the entrance to the garage is on Fairmount?
Correct.
Right? So there is no entrance to the garage on Duncan?
There's, correct. The staircase that services the garage and the refuse room is located here, which is kind of, sort of in between Duncan and Westside.
So the electrical room there has double doors, I see, but that won't be accessible for the garbage to be taken out?
No. The refuse will come, will be removed from the main refuse room here, or from the floors above if, you know, they're not over capacity, and they'll be brought out through this staircase.
To the staircase and brought out to Fairmount Avenue?
Westside.
Westside? I don't see, in the garage area, you have the two-yard dumpsters. How do they come out on Westside Avenue? I don't see a... I don't see a, an opening. I just see a...
So they'll, they'll be brought...
Up the ramp where the parking garages, cars come in?
They'll be brought up through the, the staircase.
No, I think, well, I think the commissioner's asking if the dumpsters themselves...
You got two-yard dumpsters in the, in the, in the parking garage area, so people take their garbage down, they're gonna be throwing them inside those dumpsters. They're about this long.
Sure.
About this high. How do you, you're gonna wheel those to Fairmont, and then wheel them on, and leave them on the sidewalk of West Side?
No, I, I think the plan is to bag the refuse in the trash room and carry it up the street.
I don't think that's gonna work. That's not what they're showing.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, they're showing, you're showing, one, two, three, four, five, two-yard dumpsters for trash removal. It shows, it shows you the, oh, yeah, it does show you the path up the stairs, so they're gonna be taking them out of there, bag it, and...
Yeah, I mean, we, I suppose they could bring it through the elevator as well, but it's, the, with this being a public garage, we don't want people walking up the, you know, trying to push these things up the ramp.
So when they get upstairs to the next level, then the plan is to... Now you're on the next level, the plan is to pick up outside on West Side Avenue?
Correct.
To the main entrance?
Through the side entrance.
To the side entrance?
There is a side entrance.
I see that.
Over here.
Okay, now I see that.
And then a sidewalk that connects to...
Okay.
Connects to the, the West Side Avenue here.
So somebody's gotta dive into those dumpsters, take out the garbage, and bag it.
Correct. I mean, somebody's gotta bag it for, you know, take the individual unit owner's bags and put them into, you know, proper collection bags. So we felt that it was reasonable to do that in the refuse room and then carry it out as opposed to, you know, wheeling the dumpsters out.
Yeah.
And then doing it on the street, so, or on the sidewalk.
Right.
I hope the bags don't break. Got a question for you. Is this everyday pickup? Is that what you're planning on doing?
Every day, or...
In other words, you're gonna have, you're gonna have somebody services on a daily basis, five days a week, or...
I, I believe the plan is to use municipal pickup on a regular scheduled pickup days.
And...
You're gonna run into a storage problem.
The commercial would have private pickup. The commercial space would have private pickup.
Would be bagging it there and then bringing it out in the street?
So on West Side Avenue, we're gonna have commercial garbage being picked up every day? Or whatever, a couple times to fit than what the city is picking up? Is what you're saying?
Still have...
Because this is not a private company that's picking the garbage up. This is gonna be the city, Jersey City's.
Correct.
Pick it up.
For the, for the commercial, it's typically private, and that would be for the...
Commercial's private, yes.
For the individual tenants to arrange that, correct.
I think they, I think you really need to take a hard look at that again, because you've got recycling, and then you have garbage pickup. And I just can't imagine this going out on West Side Avenue. And then you're gonna take, you're gonna have floors where you have storage capabilities for garbage and recycling, bring it down, repackage it, put it into a container, and then wheel them out, right?
No.
I'm getting totally confused.
No, they're gonna bring it downstairs.
Uh-huh.
Repackaged it, and then carry it upstairs a flight, and bring it out of the building.
In bags.
Oh, that's not gonna work.
No, that's not gonna work.
Well, is it, is it possible to get a truck into a garage, or a...
Well, I don't, I, that's my question. I don't, I don't know. If it possibly, I mean, you, you have a storage space on the opposite side of the garage that has room for garbage bins. I mean, that's closer to the Fairmont Avenue, but that's not the point. That's not my question. My question was, I'm not gonna decide the building. My question is, how do you, they're gonna be bringing down the garbage once a week from all the recyclable, all the floors?
Yes.
And put them in, yes?
I think the plan is to utilize the refuse rooms on each of the floors as the primary refuse storage.
Right.
So then they'll be removed on select pickup days from the individual floors and brought out to the street. The main refuse room in the basement, we have designated as overflow, as space for bulk items, such as, you know, you get a furniture delivery or something, that would be stored in the basement refuse room. But we have, again, we have an oversized refuse room on each floor with several bins and a separate recycling area.
Okay.
So the, the main plan, and I'm sorry for the confusion, is to utilize the refuse storage on each floor, and then if additional storage is needed in the basement, that would be utilized for, but it's not to bring everything to one location and then bring it out.
Oh, okay.
So the tenants on each floor will take their garbage bags, bring them into the refuges and recycling on each floor, correct?
Correct.
And then some attendant, somebody is going to then collect those garbage bags and bring them to street pickup?
Correct.
On whatever day there's street pickup.
Is that gonna be in a, in a container, or is just gonna be out in the street?
Um, I, I don't have, I will say that it will be, I don't know, did you have an...
I don't, whatever is required, I don't think we do containers. I don't think that's permitted for, for buildings of this size, but I, I don't...
Not gonna wheel a container through the lobby and into the side of the door.
So it would be bags.
That would be bad.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if something smokes.
You're gonna pile bags outside.
Yeah.
That's what you're gonna do on West Side Avenue.
Right. So is, is there gonna be a container on that West Side? Or it's gonna be pile of bags sitting outside?
I think it was just stated that it's gonna be piles of bags. I don't know how everything's gonna get into the bags, because you're gonna have all different bags in these refuge containers on each floor. Now, if the attendants, is the attendant going to compile and...
Separate.
Separate, okay. I mean, if that's...
They're not gonna use the elevator to bring the material down?
Um, it's, I, I...
Got to.
I suppose, that's not the intention, but...
From the basement, that's not the...
From the basement, that's not the intention.
But it's hard to judge on each floor, depending on occupants and use of how much refuge will be generated, recyclable or otherwise. And I can imagine that the maintenance person, custodian, whatever, go around and check, and then when the bag gets filled, just tie it up and then take it out and put it into some kind of cart or something, because you don't want it dragging through the halls, because if it pops, then you got a problem. And then get it down to that room that you've indicated that's on Duncan. So to me, the only rub in all this, I mean, that makes sense to me, whether they take an elevator down and clear it out. But to Pat's point, West Side Avenue is a pretty busy thoroughfare, and there's bus stops you're proposing, changing, and Duncan is also a major thoroughfare to get down to Tonley Avenue. I think if you backed out a door, built in a door off of that room on Duncan, so you could line it up on that side of the building, it makes a whole bunch more sense to me.
Sure. I, I think that's a legitimate, a good comment.
So, Will, can you go back to the site plan?
Sure. Site plan or first floor?
Do all these garbage rooms line up?
They do, but with the exception of, of the cellar at the basement.
That's all right. But all the top units, all the garbage rooms line up?
Correct.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I would have you take a look at that and do something with chutes, and get it down to whatever level, the street level, and bring it out that way, because I just can't imagine 130 units, people throwing food matter and everything else, and if it sits there for twice, twice a week, you know, collection, you're gonna have definitely an odor problem.
Sure.
I know, I used to be in the business.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
I...
So, Will, I think, I think what the board is asking is, if we could relocate the trash pickup to Duncan, see if we're able to do that, and add a trash chute into the trash rooms. Do you think that's something we're easily able to do?
With the compactor. So if it gets down and through chute compacted, put it into industrial bags, and then...
And then just wheel it out.
Sure. That's, that's certainly, certainly feasible from an architectural standpoint.
You wouldn't have to go to two-yarders. You could use, with a compactor, you could go to like a yard and a half or your one-yard container.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And then wheel it out, take two guys. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna have different, how many garbage rooms do you have altogether that's on each floor, right?
Four.
So you got four, five. So you got two guys, basically, you're gonna go in there and try to straighten them out on a daily basis, correct?
That's, that's, yes.
I, I think you're throwing labor for nothing. I would throw it down a chute, do it that way. Maybe recycling, because recycling, really, you're gonna get, people do, they'll do recycling, but not to the extent where they're generating garbage. But I would look at that.
Sure.
I think these are, I think these are great suggestions. Will did testify that they're feasible, and I think we can agree to make those changes as a condition with, with final approval by staff if the board is okay with that.
I gotta, you know, I'm in favor of your project. I like it, I like the way, I like the way you set it up. I'm very impressed with it. But the only concern that I have is the double handling and everything else, and dealing with residents, and expecting them, just to get them to that room is gonna be an accomplishment.
Sure, understood.
And then taking it out.
You need a chute program. That's what you need. You need a regular chute program into a, like a floor, like a compactor, and then wheel them out.
And what's the overall width again of the sidewalk on West Side Avenue is six foot eight?
Eight and a half.
That I saw?
Six feet, eight and a half inches.
Six foot, eight and a half inches. There's not a lot of...
The tree pits.
Not a lot of space when you bring it out to garbage.
Eddie, I think I heard Mr. Joseph say that they would consider and/or be open to, and the architect, putting the disposal on Duncan, which is less dangerous. I mean, West Side Avenue, in that particular part with the park over there, you got a gas station, Duncan coming into Tonley, if you put those bags out there, I think it could be bode for trouble.
Yeah, sure. I think we could easily, as I said, extend a hallway to Duncan.
Make it easy, you know, some kind of safety door.
Yeah. Steel, some type of steel door, I mean, architecturally approved, I guess. You know, for an example, if you go downtown and see how they put it out with some of these units, I can't imagine that happening over on West Side.
No, I can't either, yeah.
I live in a high-rise, and I see it all the time. We, and I live, my building has 300 occupants, but, I mean, the amount of garbage we put out is pretty substantial, but it goes into a compactor.
Correct.
We smell nothing. And in our compactor room, we separate, we put our recyclables, and they get picked up every day.
And I would look at the days that you're collecting. You might just have somebody come in, private guy come in for two days a week, and then you have the city for two days a week. That might be enough. But you just need to work that out.
So I think the consensus in the board here is to relook on your garbage disposal.
Sure.
Santo, you have anything to add to that?
No, I know that Mr. Joseph had indicated that he would make that a condition of approval and work on it with city planning. Madam Chair, I don't know if it's something that, that the board wants to see, or if they're willing to delegate that authority to, to city planning with a condition as suggested.
Counsel, I would not have a problem with that, you know, I have no problems even working with city planning, if I'm allowed to. I don't know whether I'm allowed to do that.
So I think if city planning's gonna do it, city planning's gonna do it. I think if the board wants to see it, you know, I don't think, to Commissioner Torres' point, it's not our job to design it for them, although I can appreciate your expertise in the field. I think the comments have given them the direction they need, but if the board wants to see it before they're comfortable moving forward, that's this board's prerogative. If the board is comfortable with the condition and city planning addressing it, they can move that way as well.
I have no problem with city planning addressing it.
I think, I think we will have city planning, work with city planning to address it, yeah.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, I think it's pretty specific too, right? So we're relocating trash pickup to Duncan, we're incorporating a chute program, and we're incorporating a compactor into the, into the building.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Good. One, two, three.
Understood, thank you.
I would spill it.
All right. I think that was Commissioner's first question, is there...
Nothing else.
We have a traffic engineer, which I'm not going to call up unless there's any specific questions from the board, but we do have a planner to come up and talk about the variances.
Okay. So we'll have your planner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Marcella Traina, first name M-A-R-C-E-L-L-A, last name Traina, T-R-A-I-N-A.
Ms. Traina, did we qualify you here before?
No, you have not.
Okay. You wanna give us a brief background?
Yes. So I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Both my license and certification are in good standing. I received my bachelor's degree from the Rutgers Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy. I previously served as the reviewing planner for the Hudson County Planning Board, and I've been accepted by an expert before over a dozen other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
You qualify.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
I would like to introduce this exhibit and mark this as a one.
Just make sure you're talking into the...
Sure.
A3. A3, counsel.
My apologies. So here you have an aerial exhibit that was prepared by my office, Stonefield Engineering and Design, located at 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey. It is an aerial exhibit that was prepared on March 25th, 2025. So I'm gonna speak very briefly to the relief that we are seeking this evening. We are seeking a few C variances in relation to the proposed minor subdivision, which includes minimum lot area depth and setbacks. So as you can see on this aerial, we are subdividing existing Lot 9 to be nearly identical with Lots 4 through 8. All of these lots, including Lot 9, are part of a traditional rowhouse development, and these types of developments have buildings that are similar in scale, in building scale and setbacks. So we're proposing to subdivide Lot 9 to main consistency in lot area width and depth as those neighboring lots. So from a neighborhood impact standpoint, excuse me, neighborhood impact standpoint, the, this lot is going to look nearly identical to its neighboring lots while allowing for a larger rear yard and landscape buffering to Lot 65. We are not creating any new bulk variances as a result of this application, but I do briefly want to touch on one of the waivers that we will be seeking, and that is for lighting. I want to note that the areas that we are seeking relief for are just along the property lines, and that is to, and that's for security purposes. There will be no spillover over to the adjacent properties. So seeing as how we are compliant with building height, setbacks, and parking, I believe the proposed development is in alignment with the ordinance and promotes the intent of the NC-1 Zone, which is to recognize the existence and importance of neighborhood business districts and provide ground floor commercial and mixed-use buildings to promote walkability. The project also meets the city's master plan goal to create a balanced housing supply and restore and establish the traditional street grid with commercial space rather than another surface parking lot. As you can see on this aerial, that's exactly what we're doing. We are replacing this surface parking lot with a brand-new mixed-use building. And because the project is mostly compliant with the zoning ordinance, master plan, and is in character with the existing neighborhood, we don't anticipate any substantial detriment to the public good, these minor variances can be granted under the C2 benefits versus detriments criteria, and I believe that this project carries out MLUL Purpose A, which is to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And that concludes my testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any more comments?
Any more comments?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
All right, thank you. That does conclude our direct testimony.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open for public comments.
Eric, Eric, can we put the lights back on?
Good evening.
I do. Kayla Burrell, K A Y L A B U R E L L, 197 Duncan Avenue.
Ms. Burrell, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I am speaking tonight as a Vice President of Lincoln Park North Neighborhood Association and Chair of Reconstruction Committee. This project was first presented to us nearly two years ago, and while we recognized some potential neighborhood benefits, we also raised serious concerns. Chief among them was the lack of clarity around how those 20 public parking spaces within the garage would actually be implemented and accessed. Those spaces, as Mr. Joseph mentioned, are codified by Jersey City Ordinance 23-057 and were approved in June, on June 7th of 2023, as a restrictive covenant of that parcel. When the project returned to the agenda in January with no visible changes addressing those concerns, we were disappointed. It felt as though our input, particularly on the public parking issue, had been overlooked. We do appreciate the developer's willingness to meet with the community, following that meeting to incorporate some of our feedback, like the green canopy and reducing the number of units. We do thank them for those revisions. The inclusion of the green roof and municipal space was also a step in the right direction and contributes positively to the broader neighborhood. That said, we still believe there is room for a meaningful improvement on a project of this size and visibility. Specifically, we urge the developer once again to ensure that the proposed co-working space within the municipal area is accessible to the public. That would be a tangible, tangible benefit for the residents and a more equitable use of shared space. We've also asked for that mature tree on Fairmont near the entry to the garage to be preserved. That has not been mentioned this evening. We have concerns about the function of the commercial spaces, unloading, loading customer egress as well as refuse, all going in and out of just four doors onto a narrow sidewalk. West Side Avenue will likely create unsightly and potentially unsafe congestion. Like the board mentioned, we're concerned about the continued lack of real, of a real developed plan for managing those 20 parking spaces. This is not a minor detail, it's a critical piece of community infrastructure that was promised and remains vague. Without a clear and enforceable plan for access, retail hours, signage, and oversight, these spaces risk being functionally unusable for public. We look forward to welcoming our new neighbors. We hope this project can still evolve to include the changes necessary to make it a true asset and not a burden to the surrounding community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public?
Seeing no one else from the public, I've moved to close.
Second.
Mr. Joseph, would you like to respond to the questions asked?
Sure, so the tree can't be saved because it's, it would obstruct the driveway and the views from the driveway going in and out. The co-working space, it's, it's not, it's not open to the public. That's not something my client wants to do, is, it's an amenity for the building. And the, the parking spaces, we have to continue to work with city council on that. That was something that was negotiated and done as part of the, the closing on the property. It wasn't done as part of the, the planning board application, it was done to release the deed restriction. And it's very difficult to make any progress with city council right now. We plan on picking that up along with the lease agreement for the commercial space in the new year. You know, there's no, there's no variances for the, for the building itself, and, and we feel we've made substantial concessions, even though we don't have variances, including reducing the unit count and, and the ample greenery.
Commissioners, may I suggest that to address maybe concerns about parking and accessibility is the signage? Maybe the applicant can work with staff on signage that reads as public parking. There is both a lobby for the garage, which is at, along West Side, so there's ample opportunity there. And then there's probably an opportunity at the garage entrance as well.
Happy to do that, and, and anything else that city council may suggest once, once we get to, to that stage?
The only thing with that, Matt, and to the, Ms. Burrell's point, is to the extent that we've defined public, I mean, it's still a vague concept. I mean, we're, I mean, we're leaving it in council's hands. So if we say public, but yet it means some negotiate, negotiated out, you know, so public accept? Or public just?
The intention is for it to be open to, to anyone who wants to park there, whether it's someone just parking there and walking around the neighborhood or utilizing the, the commercial space as a, as a patron.
I made that point earlier. I think the first come, first served basis during whatever hours are deemed retail is fine, but that's not in our purview, right?
So I think, Commissioner, the, what everybody has to understand is there was a deed restriction on a portion of the property. So when a deed restriction gets placed on the property, the property is burdened by that restriction. Thereafter, the person that has the benefit of the restriction on the property can remove that restriction. So it is possible that there's a restriction on property. You can never build a single-family house on this property. I put it on my property. I decide, I own this piece of property, I'm gonna restrict it, that you can't build a single-family house on this property. If in 15 years I decide I wanna remove it, I can just file the appropriate paperwork removing that restriction from the property. If I sold it to you and you wanted to build a single-family house, you would have to come back to me as the person with the restriction and get me to remove it. So there was a restriction that on one of the lots that the entire project is affecting, there was this parking restriction. City council was the benefit of that restriction, and city council through ordinance has now modified that restriction. And the ordinance speaks to how it's been modified. So now it has been modified to, a minimum of 20 parking spaces shall be available at the property for public use during retail hours at no cost. That's what city councils modified that restriction to. Enforcement and interpretation remains with the city, not this board, obviously. I think all of the comments, all of the concerns are absolutely valid, but that's for city council and the property owner to figure out how that's actually going to look, along with all the other modifications to the restriction and considerations as set forth in that ordinance. I don't know why it hasn't been further explained in the.
I don't think it has.
Two years, but I think I can guess.
Well, I think you, I mean, reading a city ordinance, ordinance is pretty straight out, you know, and that's what we gotta abide by. So if it's 20 spaces, open to the public during retail.
That's it.
End of story.
Counsel, I have a question. If you put a time limit, 30 minutes, 45 minutes on those spaces, because really they're gonna be used for the commercial entity, that, commercial entities that are in this building.
It's just not, this isn't our.
It's not our purview.
It's not our purview.
And it's already been decided that it's 20 spots, public use, during retail hours, at no cost. Period, end of story, that's the agreement. Enforcement, the city enforces.
Thank you, Santo. Matt, this is your, you're stepping in for.
Yes, yeah, I reviewed, I'm stepping in for Tanya. I reviewed the application materials, the staff memo prepared by Ms. Marion. We've put, I believe, two conditions on the record, but there are, in addition to those, five recommended conditions in the staff memo dated February 25th, 2025. The applicant, do you comply with those?
Yes, the applicant agrees to those in addition to the.
To the forestry and transportation comments as well?
Correct, and, and to the other, what we discussed here this evening as well.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Well, Matt, what does your understanding, will that transcribe into the ones about refuge? Refugees?
Yes, so it's my understanding that there was, there's a condition about, about refuse that was multifaceted, looking at chutes, looking at the, moving it to Duncan.
Moving it to Duncan.
And just basic efficiency beyond what they might have already proposed.
And a compactor.
Well, chute, compactor, exit to Duncan, right.
I just wanna add on to that, that will be, you're looking at a, not a major compactor, you're looking at basically an apartment compactor that they hook up a chute to where it really goes into it. And it'll push it into the container, so this way you can have a two-man operation to wheel it out. That's what you need.
Understood.
Matt, I'd like to see that signage about the parking.
Yes, I think that's the other one in the, in the melee of conversation. I think that maybe didn't get closed up, but counsel, that can be met as well?
Yes, absolutely.
And that resolution, that condition's gonna be reviewed after six months of completion to see that the signage isn't problematic.
Sure.
So that would bring it to seven conditions?
That is correct. Staff recommends approval of this application. We've heard succinct testimony and planning testimony from their team for this, this project that will obviously also include some community benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to, to make a motion to approve case P 23-024 as presented to our board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo and the added conditions stated.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Takur.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
The building's a beautiful build. The design is really great. But you know, you, growing up in Jersey City, you were kinda gonna attach to certain things, and I still miss Duncan Hardware, you know? A hardware store that had all the old stuff that you needed to fix something, you know, with the old buildings in Jersey City, so. So sometimes development kinda hurts, you know, but it's gonna bring up the neighborhood, it's gonna make it look good. Just, um. It's long overdue with those parking lots there like that, too. It's that, it always got built on that site, so with that, I vote aye.
Commissioners, tomorrow?
Commissioner, I agree with you, I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Yeah, I think the project is great, I think it's transformative, and that's trisect of Duncan and West Side. I mean, people coming up off of Tonley will get a great view rather than some of the things that are there now. And I appreciate your, Mr. Joseph, and your team's ability to listen and to take some practical suggestions into consideration, I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Acting Chair Gunganam?
So I wanna thank the public for coming out and voicing their concerns as well. I encourage you to continue to work with the community. This is a great addition to West Side Avenue, beautifully architect, building as well. My vote is aye.
Motion carries on in favor of a motion to approve of.
Thank, thank you so much. And Commissioner Torres, my client does own Duncan Hardware, it's not relevant to the application, but we're gonna, my client owns Duncan Hardware, so they're gonna try to save the business as part of this, as part of this development as well.
We'll get him an application for Lowe's or Home Depot, don't worry.
All right.
Actoredor? At this time, I would like to call in case P 2024-0207, address is 89 Neptune Avenue.
Hello, good evening, filling in for Mr. Higgins tonight. Stephen Joseph, Kasano Quigley Chirami. This is not a notice application, but we did notice, so I might as well mark it into evidence, A1.
I confer, counsel, however, since you've made the effort, we will make the effort. A1 for evidence.
Greatly appreciate that, thank you. 89 Neptune, we'll keep this quick. It's a new four-story mixed-use building, ground floor commercial, eight dwelling units. We need minor site plan only, no major site plan, no variances, and I'll let Jeff get sworn in.
Thank you.
Hey. Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Mr. Lewis, you're licensed current?
It is current and in good standing, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 89 Neptune Avenue is currently a vacant lot, it's a 25 by 100 lot located in the Ocean Avenue South redevelopment plan. As was mentioned, we are proposing an, as of right, four-story, eight-unit building with some ground floor retail. The apartments break down as six two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. So I wanna start walking through the site plan here on the right. Neptune Avenue is at the top of this drawing. We are proposing a new concrete curb and new concrete sidewalks. There's an existing curb cut here that we will be removing and building a new curb. We're also proposing one new street tree. On our property, our building is built on the front property line. We have side yard setbacks of two feet and three feet. The three-foot side yard setback is used as a walkway to this building's secondary entry as well as to the backyard of the building. The backyard is 10 by 25. It's a totally a lawn area, which will be used by the building tenants, and it's enclosed with a six-foot wood fence. Moving on to the floor plans, I'll make this a little thicker. Moving on to the floor plans, at the top here, we have our cellar plan, there is a cellar in this building. At the front of that cellar space, we have a trash room for the residential tenants, meter rooms, as well as a sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkled building. The back half of the cellar is dedicated to the retail space. This is storage for the retail space and has a stair that goes directly up from here, and you can see it come up here, into that retail space on the ground floor. The retail space itself is 443 square feet on this ground floor. It has its own ADA bath, as well as, of course, entry and windows from the front of the building. The remainder of the building, besides that, is residential. There are two residential entries. The first is at the front of the building, and that entry leads directly to stair number one. The second entry is at the side of the building here. That leads into a lobby area, which gives access to our mail area, bicycle storage room for, for bicycles, a stair that accesses the cellar here, and then also stairs that go up to the second floor. The last on this floor, we do have two apartments. These are both one-bedroom, one-bath apartments located in the back here. These are our two ADA adaptable apartments. And then, as I mentioned, we have the backyard, which would be accessed from this walkway. Oh, I'm sorry. Looking to the second floor here down below, we have two stairs and a central corridor. And then there are two apartments on this floor, they're each two-bedroom, one-bath, one in the back of the building, one in the front of the building. These apartments also have a stackable washer dryer in the apartment. The third floor and the fourth floor plans are exactly the same as the second floor, no changes. And then here, we're looking at the roof plan. We have mostly a flat roof, it's accessed by one stair, but it's not for the tenants, this is just for maintenance. There is a utility room, which is used, which is used for our water heaters, as well as 557 square feet of green roof trays. Moving on to the building elevations, I wanna start at the front elevation here, where we're proposing a bit of a modern twist on a traditional A-frame building. The main finish is fiber cement siding on the front elevation in two different colors. The first is a night gray, which is a dark gray color. We're using that at the base of the building. We're using that for the sign band across between the first and second floor, and we're also using that for this outside border that outlines the A-frame on the upper floors. The second material is arctic white fiber cement siding, and we're using that as the infill on the upper levels. At the base of the building, we have all black aluminum windows and doors. And then on these floors above, we also have black frame windows with matching black P-Tex below them. Looking to the right, this is our rear elevation. We're proposing vinyl siding on the rear. It's, again, two colors with dark gray at the first floor, and then a lighter gray for the upper three floors. And just like with the front elevation, the back has black frame windows with matching P-Tex below them. And then here, we're looking at one of the side elevation. And then here, we're looking at one of the side elevations, this has the same finishes as the rear, same windows and P-Tex rails as the rear and this at the front. The only difference, what we can see here, is that the first 10 feet of the building, we actually have an A, a gable roof, which gives us that A-frame in the front. Everything from there back, we have a flat roof, so we do have gray metal siding, excuse me, gray metal roofing for that roof in the front of the building. And we see the same thing on the right side with no windows. That actually would conclude my presentation of the building. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I just, I want to look at something real quick.
Sure.
The units on the roof, the hot water heaters, that's in a closed room, you're going to put them on the roof?
Yes.
Eight hot water heaters? How many, how many units altogether?
There's eight apartments and eight water heaters, yes.
No elevator in this building?
No elevator.
So if I was going to change that hot water heater, I got to go up five flights of stairs?
Yeah, well, they're light when they're empty.
They're light?
When they're empty, they're light.
I can tell you by this drawing, they look like more than 55 gallons.
Well, no, there are only one bathroom in each, so these should be 30, 40 gallons at the most. It's only one bathroom in each apartment, so these should only be 30 or 40 gallons. 40, I would say.
You're on certain picket.
Long showers, okay, 40. Sure. Correct.
Just wanted to speak clear.
Anything else?
Is that your presentation?
That concludes our direct testimony.
Okay. If the board has no other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Seeing no one from the public, I move to close.
Second.
Thank you. Joseph, can we hear from you?
Sure. First, I would just like to confirm with Mr. Joseph that the applicant has gotten a chance to go through the staff's recommended conditions.
There are five conditions, and they are acceptable to the applicant.
Great, thank you. So in reviewing the minor site plan application, I found that the plans comply with the applicable development standards of the neighborhood mixed-use zone of the Ocean Avenue South redevelopment plan. The mass of the building seems appropriate for the neighborhood, and, yeah, and, yeah, all the applicable standards are compliant with it. So, yes, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Acting, acting chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number P 2024-0209, 0207, 89 Neptune Avenue, as presented to our board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Thakur.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangadhan.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call case P 2024-0173, which is a preliminary and major site plan with variances, 359 Johnston Avenue.
Good evening. Stephen Joseph Kassano Quigley Chirami for the applicant. This is.
This is the trifecta.
This is a notice application, I'd like to enter, this is A1, thank you so much.
I'm chairman, received the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at 359 to 361, and 409 to 411, 360, 359, 361, Johnston, and 409 to 411, Pacific here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it, this matter had been previously scheduled and carried to tonight with preservation of the notice. We're going to mark it A1 for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 359 dash 361, Johnston, and 409 to 411, Pacific Avenue. It's a new six-story mixed-use building, ground floor commercial, 35 dwelling units, seven parking spaces that are accessed from an alleyway in the rear. There was a prior application and approval way back in 2022 for a portion of the site, and what happened is the client acquired adjacent property, that's why there's a new application before this board today. So in order to construct this building, the applicant does need preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances for building coverage and landscaping. Russell is our architect this evening, let's get him sworn in, and let's walk through the plans.
Yes, I do. My name is Russell, last name is Bodnar, B-O-D-N-A-R. I reside at 52 Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. I've been an architect since like 1995, and I've been before this board before, and my license is in good standing.
Thank you.
All right, as you can see here.
It's not up on the screen, right? There we go.
Okay. As you can see here, this is a project in the zone called Lafayette Redevelopment Zone. It's 7,500 square feet, it's a lot, it's a 75 by 100 lot, it's a corner lot on the corner.
Counsel, do we have to mark the rendering?
The actually, the rendering is actually in the, in the set as well.
Yeah, it was just pulled out of the set, but it is in the set.
Just for the set meeting. The building itself is 35 units, like I said, it's on the corner of Johnston and Pacific. There's a commercial space on the ground floor, the 35 units consist of 25 two-bedroom units, I mean, 25 one-bedroom units, eight two-bedrooms, and two three-bedroom units. The three-bedroom units are 1023 square feet. The eight-bedroom units are 966 and 1023 square feet, and the 25 units are one-bedrooms, and they are about, they're average around 650 square feet. The building, as you can see in front of you, was a six-story building, it is 60 feet from base flood elevation. Base flood elevation here is, is seven feet off the ground at elevation 13, so that means that we are compliant with the height, we are compliant, oh, that just moved here. We are, it didn't show back up.
There it is, yeah.
We are compliant with the height regulations. If we want to take a look at the outside building, our building is constructed of brick and metal panels. The metal panels are a light metal panel on the bay sections, and on the upper section, it's a black ribbed metal panel, and we have some other lighter metal panels underneath all the windows. Let's just jump right into the plans. Go back here, this thing goes fast. As you can see, let's just go down a little bit. On the ground floor, we have the commercial space, which is actually located on Pacific Avenue, and that's 20, that's 1,820 square feet, and that actually goes around the corner as well to Johnston Avenue. Our, our main entrance for our lobby is on Johnston Avenue, we come in on this level, we have an upper level, which is at elevation 13, our ground level's around elevation 6. You come up, you go up in the elevator, you get to the upper level, the upper level has the amenities rooms and some of our equipment that needs to be raised to that elevation. Behind, on the lower level of that space, you actually have the 18 parking, 18 bike parking spaces behind, on that section over there, there's a garbage and recycle room on that level, and in the back section of the building, and there's an alleyway on this, in this lot, so there's a 11-foot section of our lot as part of the alleyway, and then adjacent to that, on the other side is an 11-foot easement. So there's a 22-foot alley, basically, in the back part of this building to access the parking. We are looking for two variances, and that's why I wanted to come to this plan first. As we go to, on the corner, we're only allowed, we're actually only allowed to have 75% lot coverage, with building coverage, I meant to say, and we're asking for 80%. One of the reasons we're asking for 80% is, well, two reasons mostly, in Jersey City, we do get, you do have a little bit more lot coverage on the corner building to fill out the donut, so you don't see the sides, you don't actually see down into the, the center of the donut of the, of all the, our properties here in Jersey City. But actually, the 70, the 80% helps me with blocking all these parking, the seven parking spaces from Johnston Avenue. So you actually, when you're walking down, you primarily will not see those parking spaces from the side of, from the side of the building. So that's one of our, our reasons we're doing that, as well as, since we do have the parking in the back, the seven parking spaces, we, we don't comply with the landscaping. We're supposed to have 50% of the remaining area left over that's not part of the building as landscaped, and we're only providing 17% of that landscaping area as well. So our two variances, again, are the landscaping and the, the 80% building coverage. So as we go down to adjacent, the other floors here, you can see our layouts, like I said earlier, we have the three-bedroom units, again, we have an affordability clause that we're going to be needing due to the fact we're allowed to have 16 units on this site as of right. So we are going to use the, the overlay, the affordable housing overlay, and provide.
So Russ, sorry, just, it's not the, it's not the overlay, there's an affordable housing bonus.
Bonus, that's correct.
In this particular redevelopment plan that requires 15% of all bedrooms be affordable.
Correct, that's 15%, I forgot that, it's 15% of all the bedrooms, so I think it comes out to, we're going to need to provide six bedrooms.
Seven.
Is it seven?
Seven, seven bedrooms, and we're proposing three, three affordable units.
Three affordable units, yes, correct. So as you can see, we do have the three-bedroom units, we're probably going to provide the three, those three bedrooms, and then an additional one-bedroom unit. So the three-bedroom units are actually located on the second and third floor, and they're 1023 square feet, and then one, then, one of the one-bedrooms, whichever one the town just requires us to give, that will be on our requirement list. If we go down a little bit further, we do have amenities area on the roof, and we have a substantial roof deck that is 1,120 square feet, and we do provide 1,710 square feet of green roofing, which is a significant amount of green roofing for this project. I believe that's pretty much the entire application.
Any questions? No? Any questions? Oh, I thought you did have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. We do have some brief planning testimony this evening on the, on the variances.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, I do. Sure. Samuel Bellamy, last name B-E-L-L-A-M-Y.
Mr. Bellamy, your license still current?
Yes, current and in good standing.
Thank you.
All right, so we are in the Lafayette Park redevelopment plan. As Russ mentioned, we do have two bulk deviations, one for building coverage and the other for landscaping. Building coverage, we're at 80%, where 75% is permitted. I agree with Russ's testimony, this is a corner lot, it could accommodate the additional building coverage we're proposing. It's one of those conditions where the setbacks don't exactly match the lot coverage that's permitted because of that corner lot condition, so we are complying with all the setback requirements here, the front yard setback, side yard setbacks, and the rear yard setback requirement. We're proposing our yard along Johnston Avenue to go up into that easement area, and that does block the parking spaces, so I think it provides a more attractive building frontage and covers up that parking condition. We're also providing for a mix of, of units within this building, one-twos and three-bedroom units, as well as providing for the required affordable units as part of the, the bonus here. As far as the landscaping, we're proposing 173 square feet of planting beds along Pacific Avenue, that accounts for 11.8%. The requirement's 50% of the, the lot not used for, for building area, so a lot of, most of that area accounts for the alleyway, which is a little over 56% of the lot area not as part of the building, and that area is required to be paved area as part of that, that easement. And then the remaining lot area is used for the seven surface parking spaces, and that does meet the minimum parking requirement here. We actually have seven spaces where five's required. In addition to the planting beds along Pacific Avenue, we also have 1,600 square feet of green roofing, and we'll be adding three new street trees along Pacific Avenue, one new tree along Johnston, and expanding the existing tree pits and keeping the existing trees along Johnston to meet all the current forestry standards. In addition, we are meeting the minimum green area ratio, and that's a combination of those landscaping elements I mentioned. Overall, overall, I think we are improving the conditions on the property with respect to both deviations, the benefits here do outweigh the detriment, and the purposes of the redevelopment plan are advanced. We are also advancing the purpose of the municipal land use law, this is an appropriate use and development of the property consistent with purpose A, and it is a permitted density, and I think we are providing a, an anchor building at the corner here, consistent with purpose E and I of the MLUL. I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good here, I think we are providing adequate light air and open space, and with the landscaping improvements and green roofing, we're minimizing stormwater impacts here and improving the existing conditions. I likewise don't see an impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. This project is directly in line with the redevelopment plan and master plan by providing for diverse housing options and strengthening the neighborhood commercial area here at the corner. So with that, I think the positive and negative criteria have been met, and that the deviations can be granted.
Thank you. Any board comments? No?
No.
Eddie? No? Thank you.
So that, that does conclude our direct, direct testimony.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public? Come up, you have three minutes. I do.
Elaine Hansen, E-L-A-I-N-E-H-A-N-S-E-N, and my home address is 378 Johnston.
Thank you.
Hi. So I'm not sure the issue that I, the main issue that I, I'm here for concerns, the planning, but there are three buildings on Johnston that have suffered foundation damage because of pile driving, and my building is one of them. So I'm requesting that this building use helical piles as opposed to the pounding piles, and it would be great if the city could adopt helical piles in that neighborhood requirement because there've been so many buildings damaged from it. There's a city electric on the corner of Grand and Johnston, I'm at 378 Johnston, and then the building at 304 Johnston across from the light rail. So the whole span of Johnston has buildings that have been damaged from the driving, pile driving. And, you know, it's, it's a burden for the homeowners who have to deal with this, you know? You have to get a lawyer, you have to get an engineer. You have to deal with all the problems. This is three years that I've been dealing with this already, and there's still no resolution. So, and, you know, the, it's just an unfortunate setup with the alleyway. I mean, that's what's going to happen when the other homes more in the middle of the block get sold and demolished? It's just going to be, it's a weird, it's a weird thing now, it looks pretty bad, but again, I don't know if the planning board can do anything about it, I'm just bringing up that issue. And I do have one thing about the design, I, why is the dark top on the building? I think it would look better without the, the dark topping on the building, the cladding. That's just my aesthetic. I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else from the public who should speak?
Anyone else from the public?
Seeing no one else from the public, I move to close.
I second.
Joseph, do you want to address any of those comments?
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think so. I think they're construction-related issues, and the structural engineer will determine what sort of, of piles. I, I don't have the ability to agree to any condition about the, how the structure of the building is constructed.
And that's not this board's purview, obviously. Can you address the choice of? Can you address the choice of coping at the top of the building? Was that a design element that obviously the team felt?
I mean, we could, we could look into a different color. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's not a problem at all.
It was the color that the client chose, but we're, I don't think anyone's really attached to it.
It was actually more of their, his designer chose. I'm actually happy to change it.
All right. So can you work with staff on that?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're happy to work with staff on, uh, selecting a, a lighter color for the top of the building.
Okay. Any other comments? That's it? Okay. This is true.
General.
Yeah. Staff agree to the applicant's professional testimony. Uh, I would just like to ask the applicants, um, have you review and great, uh, reviewed the conditions in the staff memo and are those acceptable?
Yeah, so there are, um, eight conditions in the staff memo. Those are acceptable. I also did neglect to mention that there's also, um, review memos from, uh, from the city review agents and, and our professionals have reviewed those and there's no issue addressing any of those comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, staff approval.
At this time, I would like to, um, ask for a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion. Number P 2024 dash 0173 as presented to the board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo.
Acting Vice Chair, Takor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangin.
So I'd like to thank the public for coming out and voicing your concerns. Based on the variance requested, I feel that it's not detrimental to the project. So my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to move case number, number 17, which is case number P 2024 dash 0227. It's ma, uh, it's a minor site plan with C variance, 209 Holiday Street. Stephen Joseph?
Yeah, Stephen Joseph, uh, for the applicant. Um, this is a notice application. I do have a notice package and we will enter this into evidence.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, counsel.
Acting Chairman, we receive the applicant's public proof of mailing with respect to the application at 207 to 209 Holiday Street here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. Again, this was another matter that was listed previously. It does appear to be in order, A1 for purposes of the right.
Great. Thank you, uh, thank you so much. So 209 Holiday Street, um, it's a minor site plan. Uh, we have two C variances. We have Ahmed here, our architect. He is pulling up the plans as, uh, as we speak. We're going to try to run through this one fairly quickly for you. So while we're getting that set up, this is a new three-story, four-unit building. It's in the residential zone of Morris Canal. In order to accomplish this, we're requesting a minor site plan approval with a C variance for the front yard setback. Um, that's the only variance we have. And I think after looking at the plans, you will, uh, see that makes sense in the context of the block. Okay. This should be showing up. Any minute. All right, this is, uh, we'll enter this as A2. It's a presentation set. Everything in here is in the plans, but it's 22 slides, uh, for the purposes of presentation. 22. It'll be quick, I promise. All right, let's get you sworn in.
Yes. I'm with you. I do. Sure. Ahmed Amara, last name E M A R A.
Mr. Mara, is your license current?
It is and it's good standing.
Thank you. You may proceed.
The project, I'll, I promise I'll keep it short. Uh, 207, 209 Holiday. It is located in, um, on Holiday Street between Communipaw and Bramhall. This is the proposed, uh, building that we're going to talk about, uh, in the next few minutes. Uh, it's within a residential neighborhood. The heights of the building are all between two and three stories. We are located in the Morris Canal redevelopment plan in the residential zone. The use is conforming. The building mass is conforming. Um, the, the building footprint is also conforming, um, as well as the, uh, number of stories. Uh, the setback is the only thing, uh, is the only variance we're asking for here. While six feet would be, um, we're between the two buildings on either side of us is at zero and six feet. And we're asking to align basically with the, uh, the most predominant, uh, setback on the street, which is be 10, uh, feet, between eight and 10 feet. And we're asking for 10 because we do have residential units on the ground floor and we believe just a certain, um, gap and, and buffer in the front would be, um, provide more privacy along with some greenery that we're providing. This is the site plan and you'll see that there is a, uh, proposed patio in the front and proposed greenery that separates the, the units on the ground floor from the street. This is the front elevation that we're proposing. Uh, there is brick, um, on the front along with, uh, composite wood panel. The rear is a siding finish that matches the color of the brick along with the same composite wood. And these are the side elevations. These are the three materials that we are, uh, proposing on the building right here. The, the, the slim brick, the composite wood panel and the beige, uh, vinyl siding. The, the site plan, the, the floor plans are, are pretty straightforward. Uh, the gray here is the common entrance on the ground floor, which leads to the first unit in the building. To the left here in blue is a one, is a one unit, uh, it's a one bedroom, uh, unit on the ground floor. This is the unit that has access to, uh, the front patio. Uh, the unit in the back is a two-bedroom unit that has access to the rear yard. Above that, there are two duplexes between the two, the second and third floors. The second floor is the, uh, main prayer, uh, uh, main, main living space. The third floor is the, uh, uh, sleeping areas. We have three bedrooms on both sides of the building and then that takes you up to a, um, the roof deck of the building. We did perform the, the shadow studies as requested and there's no, um, addition really of shadow based on the building since the building next to it is slightly higher than what we're proposing. And this is the, uh, final product right here. I'm happy to take any questions.
What side of that building, there's a, a small church there? That's what that is? That's what I'm looking at?
The, no, there's two residential buildings on both sides of us.
Oh, that's a residential building?
Yeah, there, this one here is a residential building and as well as this one is a residential building. This is an older building on the left side. The left side is a newer one, um, that's I think like maybe.
The left side is where you have all the windows too, right?
We have windows on the right and the left.
Yep.
Because, because we have setbacks on both sides.
But you have one window?
Yes, yeah.
Are these going to be rentals or they're going to be?
I, I don't think a decision's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he's, like, the owners made a decision whether he's going to sell these or, or rent them.
Okay.
And Commissioner, it's not really.
What side you have?
It's not really relevant either.
I just, okay, just the fact that.
I can, I can show the side elevations if this is what you're asking.
Yeah, that's the one that caught my attention. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if somebody blocks, builds up higher and blocks you.
Well, we have a, yeah, I, I, I fully understand your point. I'm going to show the site plan. We have setbacks on both sides. To allow for the windows, for legal windows, so they're not lot line windows.
Okay.
Yeah. So if somebody were to come build it, would have to setback on, on their side based on also the redevelopment plan. They have to match the setback on our side.
Okay. My attention, that's all.
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, we do have some very brief planning testimony, so let's get, uh, Sam up here. And Sam, if you could just confirm your, uh.
Confirm you're still under oath?
Yes, I recognize I'm, I'm still under oath.
Thank you.
All right, so this project is just requesting the one bulk deviation. Um, we're asking for the 10-foot front yard setback. Six feet is the, uh, adjacent setback and 23 feet is the average on the block frontage. Mr. Amara provided the setback diagram and as he explained, we are matching the, uh, average setback of the block and I think it's appropriate and consistent with several other properties. From a other bulk perspective, we're meeting the side yard, uh, and rear yard setback requirements and below both the, um, building and lot coverage requirements. So this, this, the bulk of the building is in line with what the redevelopment plan calls. Overall, benefits of the application would outweigh the detriment. We're removing inc- current encroachments into the right of way, adding a street tree, uh, removing a curb cut. So there's several beneficial aspects of this application we're proposing. Um, we're also advancing the purposes of the municipal land use law, purpose A, C, E and I. And then with respect to the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to general welfare or, uh, uh, impairment to the purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Um, and with that, I think this, the bulk deviation can be granted.
Thank you, Sam. That does conclude our, uh, direct testimony.
Is there any questions from the board? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for public comments. Anyone from the public?
Seeing no one from the public, I move to close.
Public, let's close. Matt?
Uh, yeah, pin shitting for Cam today while he enjoys some well-deserved rest and vacation. Um, Cam authored a report dated April 2nd, 2025 that listed five staff recommended conditions. The applicant agreed to abide by those conditions.
Those conditions are acceptable.
Um, great. And just to add to that, um, so the predominant block front standard that, um, uh, Mr. Amara's mentioned here mirrors what is in our standard R1 language now. And this area in the Morris Canal redevelopment plan was originally modeled after the R1 standards as they existed several years ago, but we've since made changes to the R1 that haven't been reflected in the plan. So they're using, utilizing standards elsewhere in the code and recommended in our master plan, just not, um, in this particular redevelopment plan. Um, furthermore to add, one of the key reason, um, limits to front yard setbacks in Jersey City is to make sure we don't have illegal parking in front yards. And just to note that, um, it seems in the design, there's plenty of landscaping that would prevent that. That's all from staff.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case P 2024 dash 0227, uh, as presented with the board with the conditions on the staff memo.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Thacker.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangin.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call on case P 2024 dash 018, 0185, item 15 on the agenda. Address is 933 Communipaw Avenue.
We'll come back to it maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know when you need a break.
11 o'clock. 11 o'clock, no problem.
It's way too late. Need to wrap this up earlier. What time's our cutoff time?
12:30.
Kidding, man? Leaving at 9:30.
We're going to whip all these applicants into shape.
Shape.
HDMI?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, come on, man.
I just plugged it into the.
This fast?
I was just testing you, man. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Tom Lane from Connell Foley here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a notice case that was carried from, uh, uh, April 8th to, uh, to the Bay meeting and, uh, is now before the board. Uh, I did post this packet to the portal, but I will provide a copy to counsel.
Thank you. Acting Chairman, we receive the affidavit publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application, 927, 933 Communipaw Avenue here in the city. Does appear to be the same one that was posted to the portal. It was previously scheduled as mentioned by counsel. We're going to mark it as A1.
Thank you very much.
Purposes of the record.
Thank you.
Uh, as mentioned, this is a 933 Communipaw Avenue, uh, but the board might know it better as the Hudson Subaru, uh, which is part of the series of, uh, car dealerships that are on, uh, Communipaw leading down to, uh, Route 440. Um, those, uh, those dealerships are all under common ownership. Obviously, they are leased to different dealerships who, who run those, uh, those, uh, car dealerships. Um, the application before you is essentially an expansion, uh, for a, uh, a drop-off area, uh, for cars that will be serviced, uh, by Subaru. Uh, they are not serviced in the drop-off area. They're actually just brought there. There's an intake and then they take them off the property. Uh, that's currently being done by Subaru on the property. This is really just to enhance the customer experience and give them a, a better place to drop it off with a cover. Uh, it has been requested to the dealership and the owners of the property by Subaru. It's essentially they're, they're asking them to do this to enhance the customer experience. Um, it is a small, uh, area that we're adding on to the building, uh, so we just have very limited architectural testimony. Uh, our civil engineer and our planner, uh, will really be the ones, uh, providing, uh, the bulk of the testimony this evening. We are asking for two variances. Uh, one relates to parking, which might sound a little odd for a car dealership, but, uh, essentially the way all these car dealerships work is it's almost like a valet system. These cars coming in, uh, that are put on the site for people to purchase. Uh, sometimes they're moved off as part of the inventory. There's very little actual customer parking because there's not a big intake and, and a big flow of customers coming in all day. Uh, the other variance, uh, relates to signage and, uh, Ms. Worstel is here to testify to that this evening. Uh, so first I'm going to bring up our architect, Scott Nicholl, who will just briefly run through the architectural plans that we're providing.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do. Uh, Scott Nicholl, S C O T T N I C H O L L.
Nick, your license current and in good standing?
It is, yes, at Tech Town Architecture Studio.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So it's a pretty straightforward design, a prefabricated building in the back with, uh, for service as described earlier. 60 by 46 feet, one story. The only work on the existing is this small area here in the back where we, we're required to add more fixtures for restrooms, uh, to make, for the, uh, for the service area. But let me show the elevations, which is the fun stuff. So despite this only being a one-story, um, prefabricated building here in the back, uh, we did bring the cornice all the way up to the existing height, which is plus or minus, uh, I believe 24 feet. Um, it will be exact same facade that is existing now. Along the bottom, uh, gray stucco and above that, uh, gray ethus panels. Um, the cornice at the top will be, uh, blue metal coping. Obviously that being just a one-story building. Obviously, that being just a one-story building there in the back, there is a very deep parapet there. Uh, what that allows us to do is screen the, um, the rooftop unit that will be, uh, required there. And it allows us also to keep the windows, if you can see here dashed, for the existing second story, which is being untouched at the existing building. Just showing you. And just a little more of an understanding, you would enter here on the two bays, out on one. And this area here, which is just a thirteen-foot block of that sixty-foot wide prefabricated building, will be offices and, uh, small lobby area, waiting room.
Thank you. No question?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, Rick Adelson, who will come up and describe the existing conditions on the site and the improvements we're making there. Uh, one thing that, um, I did fail to mention in the beginning that this is the, uh, commercial automotive zone. Uh, it has been for a long time. That was maintained, uh, when we, uh, updated the master plan. So the intent here has been to keep these car dealerships here, and obviously the intent here is to, to update, uh, a use that is continued to be permitted here.
Want to switch computers or just use the site plan you have loaded?
Why don't we just use the site plan we have loaded?
I do. Richard Adelson, A D E L S O H N, with the firm of Frank H. Lehr, L E H R Associates, one oh one South Harrison Street, East Orange, New Jersey.
Did we qualify you before?
Not in a lot of years.
A lot of years. Wow. You wanna give us a brief?
Sure, I have a bachelor of science and a master's of science in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a principal at the firm of Frank H. Lehr Associates, oh, for, I don't know, almost forty years now. Well, not forty years as principal, but practicing for forty years. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey as well as eight other states and my license is current.
You may proceed.
Okay, so we are talking about nine thirty-three Communipaw Avenue. It is located between Communipaw and Roosevelt on the, um, east side. Now, south, south side of Communipaw. Strange, just the next slide. Doesn't work that way. No, huh? Sorry.
Mr. Lean's fault. He didn't let you use your own.
I was gonna use my own, but it's okay. Okay, so we have, again, we have, on the site, we have the existing showroom building that is about six thousand eighty-five square feet facing on Communipaw. Presently located on site is about sixty-five parking spaces, is that right? Yeah, sixty-five existing parking spaces. And the proposed construction is in addition to the south side of the building, as was just described. If you look at the plan, the built, the parking spaces that are circled in blue are being removed. So we are eliminating approximately thirty-eight parking spaces now. The way the parking works at the dealership, the bulk of the parking spaces are used to queue for new cars with a handful of parking spaces available for customers. That is somewhat of a dynamic layout where the customers, depending upon which cars or which spaces are being used, there's customer parking. Sometimes customers park in front of, uh, cars for sale. Otherwise, they're, uh, available as regular parking. Not a high-volume dealership, so we're not talking about a lot of customers in any given time. It's not like a highway dealership where they've got thirty people in the showroom at all times. This is a relatively low-volume dealership in that regard. Scrolling down. Ah-ha. You see the addition on the back of the building as described is about just under twenty-eight hundred square feet. It is a service, uh, is a service receiving area. That, that operation currently exists on site as was described. What we're proposing to do is to create a two-lane drive aisle to pull in for service, four spaces for drop-off. Customer comes in, is met by a service writer. Service writer writes up the vehicle. A employee of the dealership then pulls the car out and takes it to service. Um, customer can then go into the waiting room and wait for their car to be serviced or arranged for pickup or whatever, however that works. Site is currently a hundred percent impervious. That doesn't change. Um, building, we swap building area for, um, existing pavement. When we are finished, as I said, we lose thirty-eight spaces. That leaves us, um, fifty-five spaces. I'm sorry, we lose, we, we, we wind up with thirty, uh, fifty-five spaces. I'm sorry, we wind up with thirty-eight spaces when we're done. Fifty-eight five spaces are required. Um, the dealership has multiple secondary lots around the area that they currently use for store inventory. They'll just redistribute how those lots are used to make up for the spaces as needed. When I drove through today, there's plenty of space in all their various lots in the area. We are adding a fence, a, a gate along the, um, south side of the property as requested by the staff and suggested by staff. Um, we've also received staff comments, um, that the staff is requesting a curb along the north side on Communipaw. We have no objection to that. We are proposing one sign. There's an existing sign. Um, there's an existing medallion and Subaru sign that's about a hundred and eighteen square feet that's on the building currently. We're adding a second sign that just says service. It's a seven-foot, one-inch-long sign, twelve inches tall, seven square feet. That's the extent of the proposed signage and that is a variance.
Uh, my only question is, uh, we did receive both a planning memo dated April third and a memo from, uh, traffic and engineering, uh, dated April first. I believe you reviewed both.
We have.
And we can comply or work with, uh, with the city on all the comments within?
Yes.
Correct. Thanks.
Any board comments? Thank you.
And I do have Carolyn Worstel, who's gonna go up and talk very briefly about the two variances we are requesting.
Saying that we're briefly, Mr. Briefly.
Hold on. Okay. Why is this not opening? All right, anyways, I will, uh, this is where, okay.
You have to be sworn in?
Yes. I do. Uh, my name is Carolyn Worstel, W O R S T E L L.
Mr. Worstel, your license still current and you're in good standing?
Still current and in good standing, yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we're here this evening, uh, for two variances. The first one is for that, uh, parking. Um, so there are a, um, uh, let's see, fifty-five spaces are required and thirty-eight will be provided on site. Um, as was sort of, uh, mentioned to discuss that this application, uh, is really about improving the customer service. So we're really not changing how the site functions. What we're doing is changing how the site, um, looks and, uh, feels to the, uh, customer. So when they come in on the site, instead of parking in a space and going into a building that really isn't, um, you know, just parking anywhere in the lot and going into building, they're now gonna enter the site. They're gonna go through and they're gonna see a new service sign and they're gonna know that's where they're supposed to go. They pull into this new structure. Somebody comes, they take their car, feels kind of like a valet. So it's, it's an improved customer service experience, but it doesn't really change how the site functions. However, when we do this, we are gonna be removing those parking spaces. As has been testified, this site is, uh, part of a larger operation. Um, and so those cars are going to be redistributed throughout the various different properties, um, that are under the same ownership. Um, and that's sort of how the, the, the operation still functions today, is that a lot of cars move in and out. They're moved from different spaces and that's typical of this type of operation. So overall, you know, I don't think that there's a, a substantial detriment to that. Um, I think the benefit here is that you're providing an improvement, uh, to, uh, permitted use in a district that is designed for this specific type of use. The second variance we're looking here today is, uh, for that signage. And I, I don't know if it was made clear, uh, but so the signage that we're being, is requested is going to be on the new portion of the lot. So it's gonna be on the western facade of this building. So it's not the facade that is facing Communipaw. It's not the side that is facing the other street. It's part of the, the side of the building that's sort of facing that side yard. So you're really not gonna see that signage until you enter the property. And so it really functions more as a wayfinding sign rather than, uh, like, here's the business. Uh, so it's really, that's its function. Um, so I think overall that the benefit of having that additional sign, even if we have to, for the, the variance for it, um, is that it improves wayfinding here on this property and it helps people know, once they enter the property, where are they supposed to go? How is this service supposed to happen? Um, versus today where people may end up parking wherever and sort of wandering around, not quite knowing where they're supposed to go. So I think, again, it overall improves the, the, uh, functioning of the site and the service provided on that site. Um, so I think overall, uh, if we look at this, this is very much C2. The, uh, benefits here of the improvement to the site outweigh the detriment in that loss of the parking and the additional signage. Um, looking at whether or not, um, I think this advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. Consistent with purpose A, it's advancing an appropriate use for this site. Um, this is gonna be an improvement to an existing dealership in that commercial auto zone, that commercial auto district. So this is really the, meeting that intent. Uh, it's, uh, consistent with purpose, um, I think it's, hold on, let me double check. I don't use this one very often. I think it's purpose G. Yeah, purpose G. Um, we're providing us appropriate space and appropriate, or sufficient space and appropriate location. Um, so again, we're providing more of that, uh, space for that commercial automotive use in a district where it's really designed for it. And then I think it's consistent with purpose I, um, as was, uh, testified. The design of this building is really designed to be seamless and integrated with the, uh, existing structure. You know, they're maintaining the materials, they're maintaining that cornice line. It'll be a seamless design. Um, and I actually think it will actually improve the view of the building from the rear, uh, because now you're gonna, again, have a, I think, in a, uh, a more seamless design around the building. When we look at the negative criteria, I don't see this as a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Um, as I mentioned again, this is just enhancing an existing use of the site and really won't be changing those operations. But it really will, uh, make it a better, uh, experience for the customer. Um, and I don't see that this will be a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. Um, it's consistent with the, the purpose of that commercial automotive district to upgrade appearance and function on Communipaw Avenue. Um, with, and it, through screening and buffering, sensitive site planning, uh, selective acquisition of properties and relocation of parking. So I think really here that we are upgrading that appearance. Um, we are gonna be providing a, a much nicer, uh, uh, service for those customers. Um, it's a sensitive site planning. Um, you know, they're tucking it away in the rear of the building. Um, you know, and then again, improving the overall design of the building with the enhancements. And, um, I think it also, uh, you know, enhances the city's master plan. Uh, again, it's permitting that existing commercial use to expand, uh, which promotes development and diversity economy and strengthening, um, those commercial areas. So I think overall, this project is meeting both those positive and negative criteria and that the, the two variances can be granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any board comments? Eddie?
No, no, signs do not let, no. Uh, I do have Lee Klein here as a traffic, uh, expert. If you have any questions, other than that, that is the, that is our presentation.
Thank you. I don't think we do need any traffic.
So, Mr. Lean, all the service actually takes place at one of the adjacent sites. They'll queue here and then we.
That's correct, which is what happens currently. It's, uh, it's basically, it's just, uh, uh, it was dropped off in the same location on the property before. Now they're just dropping it off in a, uh, and yes, in a box, essentially, correct.
Do this, I do have a question then. The spots that are being left over, that are gonna be made, thirty certain spots. Uh, cars are gonna be there so people can look at, um, are there gonna be spaces available for someone to drive it that's not using the service department?
Yes, yeah.
That I wanna go look at a car, yeah?
Yes, so, so there, there will be customer parking. Um, uh, as we, the testimony stated, it's really kind of a dynamic situation. Cars are coming on and off the lot, uh, as inventory comes in and goes out. Uh, our client does own, uh, several properties along this area that those cars will be moved to. But yes, some, some cars will be there on display and for sale, but there will also be spaces for customers, for the employees.
So nobody has to stop on Communipaw, pull over, there'll be none of that?
No, no, it's, yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
So you know, from the public, I move to close.
Second.
Uh, staff are great to the applicant's professional testimony and I heard that the applicant has, uh, reviewed and graded the conditions from the staff memo and also the review agent's memo.
That's correct.
So, uh, staff recommend approval.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number P two zero two four dash zero one eight five as presented to our board tonight, the conditions and the staff memo.
Acting Vice Chair Takor?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangin?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Number sixteen, I would like to ca, call in case P two zero two four dash zero two zero eight, one fifty-eight Van Wagen Avenue. We will, we'll get to fourteen. Mike Bjerg?
Harrington said he can do this in thirty minutes.
Is that so, Mr. Harrington? Thirty minutes?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant, there, this is a notice case. Although it is an as-of-right application, so I did provide those for coun, to council for review.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Uh, Madam Chair, I am receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one fifty-eight to one sixty-six Van Wagen here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. This matter was scheduled back in April and has been carried through with the preservation of that notice due today. Does appear to be in order. A1 for purpose of the record.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, the project before you tonight has, has been before this, uh, board in the past, within the last year when the Lafayette Broadway, uh, redevelopment plan, uh, was passed. It was, uh, presented to the board. And at that point, we gave a brief presentation as to what those zoning amendments would result in. And tonight, you're gonna see what they, they ultimately resulted in. Uh, I can, um, represent to the board that my client has been designated as the redeveloper by the JCR-A. He has a fully executed redevelopment, uh, agreement in hand. And that, that is a requirement, uh, as part of this, uh, uh, bonus, uh, zoning within the redevelopment plan. Uh, because it also requires them, uh, to do two things. Um, one, the, the project will have ten percent affordable housing. So, uh, we have three hundred and twenty-one residential units, so there will be thirty-two affordable housing units within the project. And they also are required to make a contribution. It goes to the JCR-A and the JCR-A makes that contribution to the Port Authority, uh, for the renovation and rehabilitation of the pedestrian bridge that crosses over at the end of Van Wagenen, uh, to Newark Avenue. Uh, so that, that will be an improvement, um, as well as ultimately as part of this project. My client is not building that. They, they're gonna leave it to the Port Authority, uh, to take care of that. So we have here a fifteen-story building, three hundred and twenty-one residential units. Ten percent will be affordable units. We'll have a hundred and twenty-three spaces. And there's also, uh, a public plaza you'll see at the front of the, the building as it fronts on Tunnel Lee Avenue. And then, and then, uh, the elevation goes down to Van Wagenen. That public plaza is also part of the, uh, the bonus proponents or requirements within, within the redevelopment plan. the redevelopment plan. So again, it's, it is as of right. We're not asking for, for any deviation or variance relief. I do have three witnesses tonight, our engineer, our architect and our landscape architect. We also have our traffic engineer here in the event there are any questions. I can also represent, we've been working with the planning department even after working with the community. So some of the improvements tonight you're seeing are a result of working with the community and planning. We also met with the traffic department and I only point that out because on the plan, you'll see when we present, there was a proposed fence on Tunnel Lee Avenue in front of the pedestrian plaza. And that was a result of working with the community. The idea was to try to prevent a lot of Uber drop-offs and pickups. Traffic indicated that they didn't want that. They didn't want to set precedent. So they, they asked us to basically take, remove that and take a wait-and-see approach to see if, if that becomes an issue and then we'll address it at a later point. We did go back to the community and discuss that with them and they understand as well. So that, that is the one comment that we're not, it's kind of a compromise. Like I said, it's a wait-and-see approach. And then all the other comments we addressed with the, the traffic department and the, the MUA will comply with. So with that said, I'm going to start off with our engineer.
Chuck, you said 16 stories. Is it 16 or 15?
15.
15. That's what it says here. Okay.
Sure. Christopher Bednarzki, B-E-D-N-A-R-S-K-I.
Did we qualify you in the past?
Not here, no.
Not here. Okay. Can you give us a brief?
Sure. I have been up in the industry for 17 years, the last nine years as a professional engineer. I received my Bachelor of Civil Engineering from the University of Delaware. I've testified before dozens of planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including in Harrison and Hudson County, and I have, my license is in good standing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark this, Mr. Harrington?
Yes, that's, I was just going to say if we could mark this slide deck as A2.
How many slides?
Eight. I guess this was, this is page two of these.
Thank you.
That's right. Dated 4/8/25. Yes. A2.
Thank you. The block is 9301, lots four and 17. The, it's 29,495 square feet, 0.68 acres, where 25,000 square feet is required for, for the lot area. The air, the property is bounded by Tunnel Lee Avenue, I went to the next slide, Tunnel Lee Avenue to the west, I'm sorry, to the east, Van Wagenen to the west, the path and the conrail to the north and existing buildings and Broadway to the south. The site currently exists with an existing building that's going to be demolished and some sloped open space over here on the east side. It is located in the Fayette Broadway Redevelopment Plan Zone 1 as a permitted use and as our attorney had mentioned, there are no variances as a part of this application. This would be, this is page two of that slide set. As our attorney mentioned, it is a proposed 15-story residential building containing 321 residential units with internal parking. We have a residential lobby over here and public plaza on the eastern end on Tunnel Lee Avenue. There's also a parking garage entrance over here on Van Wagenen. We also have a loading space internal to the building on the lower level of Van Wagenen at this cul-de-sac. We have streetscape proposed on this and our landscape architect will, will discuss the, the streetscape and the new sidewalk that we're proposing. And there is a small ground-level public sidewalk easement at this cul-de-sac bulb just to allow pedestrians to, to walk along the entirety of the sidewalk. The green area ratio is not applicable in this area because we are not located in a flood zone. Regards to parking, we are required to have 123 parking spaces and we proposing 123 parking spaces, which is the .3 spaces per bedroom unit. We have a total of 409 bedrooms. For bicycle parking, we are required 161 spaces and we're proposing 161. And for EV, we're required to have 19 spaces, which is 15% of the 123 required and we are proposing 19 EV parking spaces. In regards to stormwater, we are a major development in the JC regs because we are increasing or we have more than 10,000 square feet of impervious coverage and we're going to meet the quantity requirements by having two underground subsurface detention systems and recharge and quality requirements are not applicable because we do not disturb more than an acre and we're located in the urban redevelopment zone. In regards to utilities, all utilities are along the frontages. We're connecting an eight-inch, eight-inch water main to the water line to the 12-inch on Van Wagenen, a 12-inch connection for sanitary on Van Wagenen as well. And stormwater, we have an eight-inch connection on Van Wagenen. And then there are two transformer rooms located here and here that are fronting on Van Wagenen as well. And we agree to address all the city review letters. I've reviewed all of them and we don't have any issues with them.
Any questions for Ms. Brodarsky?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then my next witness is going to be Mr. Raker, our architect. And we're going to have an additional slide deck or a separate slide deck for this presentation. And we'd ask that that be marked as A3 and do we know 23 slides?
My name is Jack Raker, R-A-K-E-R.
Mr. Raker, did we qualify you in the past?
Yes, you have.
Your license still current?
It is.
In good standing?
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. So I'm going to start off with a, just an overall view of the, of the slide. You're looking at the building from the Tunnel Lee side, sort of sending over the path. You're looking back, what you're seeing in that foreground is that three-story front park that parks on Tunnel Lee Avenue and all 15 stories of the building. And you can see some things up at the top roof. We have some mechanical equipment up there and we do have a roof terrace. Our landscape architect will go into detail exactly what's going on with the park space in the front and that is a pedestrian entry in the front. There's no vehicular entry on Tunnel Lee Avenue. So you can see that nice three-story lobby space that's, that's fronting that front This is a view again from the path side, looking back at that drop-off area and I'll go through the floor plans. One of the things that we took advantage of on this site is we have about 20 feet of grade change between Tunnel Lee and Van Wagenen. So we're able to utilize that to sort of bench our parking in. And then from Tunnel Lee Avenue, you don't see any of the parking garage. It's just that beautiful park that we were able to, to, to place there. So this is the first level of the building. This, this portion of the building, this level only fronts on Van Wagenen. It has a vehicular entry point right here. This is the garage entry. We also have a loading area here as well, lobby area here. These were the two transformer locations that were mentioned earlier. This, this is a great area for pickup and drop-off, move-in, all of the packages, all of the deliveries to the building can happen here. We have a nice turnaround area for trucks to pull down and a loading area for move-ins and, and deliveries and things of that nature. We also have our package room down here. We also have some bike storage here. So this is a great location. All of this is hidden away from any view on Tunnel Lee Avenue. This ramp starts right here and, and takes you up to the next level. Again, this is the second level of parking. There's a mix of, of semi-automatic parking spaces, some of it stacked, but you just retrieve it with your phone. It's, it's a very simple, simple operation for the tenants. To the next level. Again, here's the first level of residential units. This is the third level if you were standing on Van Wagenen, but on the first level if you're on, on Tunnel Lee Avenue. You can see that nice park here that we place. There are units that pop out over. There's that, those large columns that you saw in the, in the rendering that hold up a portion of the building that extends over the park. And then the main lobby here, this is the pedestrian entry off of Tunnel Lee Avenue. This is a view from Tunnel Lee Avenue and that, there was that fence that was mentioned earlier that we were showing. This is what we put in here. But I'll let our landscape architect describe that, that park. But we have a nice three-story open area over that park space. Again, more amenity. We have amenity. We have a total of about almost 15,000 square feet of amenity in the building. Some of the ground floor will be clubrooms, fitness rooms, co-work spaces, gaming areas, all distributed throughout the building. We have some space up on the roof deck. I'll let, I'll take you up there in the plan, but I'll let the landscape architect cover some of that in his testimony. Again, another level, more amenity and a mix of dwelling units. And then you can see as the dwelling units extend over that park and cover a portion of that park. Going to continue up. This is just very similar floors as you go up, going all the way up to the roof deck. Here we have some additional amenity at the, up at the roof deck and then nice amenity terrace on the roof. Again, we have a total of 321 dwelling units, 32 of which are affordable. It's a 15-story building and it is under the allowable height of 175 feet. And you see we are showing a nice pool up at that, up at that roof deck area. We have four signs proposed. We have a residential entrance sign, canopy sign. We have a building address sign. We have a freestanding sign. And they all are within the allowable sign sizes. I'm going to go back. Just some additional renderings for you to see of the roof terrace and then last, that's the end of my testimony if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I have a quick question for you. It could be anybody, maybe counsel could answer it. But why are we using the address as Van Wagenen if the entrance is on Tunnel Lee?
Well, it's, it's actually, right now, we have two addresses. We have a Tunnel Lee Avenue address and a Van Wagenen. Those are the two separate lots. When we consolidate the lots, we'll get a new address from the tax assessor's office.
I mean, I, I would say that you, you want your address to be where your vehicles are going to go and a lot of your, you know, a lot, anybody who uses any type of GPS would want to make sure that they're on Van Wagenen. And that's where the vehi, vehicles are going to go, drop off, deliver and whatnot.
Yeah, but you don't have an entrance on the Van Wagenen side.
We do. We do have a pedestrian entry there, yes.
Yeah, but in short, ultimately that will be a decision by the tax assessor's office because they, they typically choose that address for emergency services purposes. So.
The lobby is on the front side where the public park is. So people are going to drop off and walk through the whole building to get to the lobby? Is that what you're saying?
So we have a few, I'm just showing the, the Van Wagenen side. That pink area, that's a lobby. That accesses an elevator.
Okay.
So we have a pedestrian entry there. Emergency services went there, they could get anywhere in the building from that location.
Yeah, good, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move right along with Mr. Carmen, our landscape architect. And we're going to go back to exhibit A2. Is that correct, Mr. Carmen?
That is correct.
Get your sworn in.
Sure. My name is Thomas S. Carmen, C-A-R-M-A-N. I'm with the firm Malolo Bauer Carmen Landscape Architects and I have had the pleasure of appearing before the board and many times in the past, my license is in good standing as a landscape architect.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Great. So this evening, I'm going to walk you through street-level landscape components as well as the plaza space and then we'll make our way up to the, to the upper amenity deck. So we've developed a richly detailed landscape plan that includes a good balance of both ornamental and native plant material along the streetscape as well as within the plaza that's off of Tunnel Lee. But before we get into the plaza, we'll start down at Van Wagenen where you can see that we're proposing three street trees over there. Based on the frontage, we are required to have four, but because of the drop-off or the loading and garage entry point, we are unable to accommodate that. The sidewalks, eight-foot wide continuous sidewalk going through there and then some planting at the, the facade of the building as well. As we make our way up to the, to the plaza, we, wrong direction. The pavement textures of the plaza create some interest as well as some lush planting. And then we have three, 3D views that show a artistic expression of this feature wall that creates an edge. And then as indicated by the, the architect, we have about a 30-foot dimension from the plaza up to the, to this canopy space where the building overhangs and that creates a great opportunity for shade within this public space. Within this area, the sidewalk is eight foot wide and what we have done, because we could not fit the street trees within that sidewalk area and allow for a wide circulation route, we've pulled them into the plaza space. We would be required to have two in this instance, but we did put three there. So overall, the plan would, the project requires six street trees in total, which we are providing. The, the upper image, again, you're seeing that, that fence that, you know, has been indicated that we would hold off on doing. A view looking into the plaza space where you see that feature wall, plenty of seating opportunities as well as an overlook overlooking the path as well as kind of to the northwest where you could see Manic Contemporary. And then up on the, the upper level where the, the interior amenity space, there is exterior amenity out towards the east where we do have barbecue grilling, some table and chair seating, synthetic turf space as well as some fire pits for an overlook. And then west of that interior space, you see where we have the pool. The pool is raised up a little bit to provide the, the depth of the pool, have ADA access clearly up to that via ramp as well as some stairs. And then other components such as kids play as well as a dog run. Do it every time. So here's a view of that eastern rooftop space. And then a view of the, the western over at the pool area. All the planting appropriate for sun and shade conditions and irrigated within these levels as well. That concludes an overview of the, the landscape components. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I'm good.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that would complete our presentation and I acknowledge for the record, we did receive the planning staff's report dated April 3, 2025, and we would comply with all of the conditions of approval. I would just note that number seven references a franchise ordinance for that proposed fence. And since that's going to be a wait-and-see approach, I would just add if necessary.
Thank you.
If that's okay with the planning staff. If that's okay with the planning staff.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Saying no one from the public, I move to close.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, staff agree to the applicant's professional's testimony and agree it will be a good addition to the community, so staff recommend approval.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Acting Chair would like to make a motion to approve case P2024-0208 as presented to our board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo.
Acting Vice Chair, Akor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangadin.
Yeah, beautifully designed, love it. Great addition to the neighborhood. Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you.
Mike, you want to take a five? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and we'll be back. At this time, I'll call in case P2024-0165. The address is 221-223 Nanda Avenue for a minor site plan.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph Casano Quigley Chirami for the applicant. This is a new three-story, four-unit dwelling in the R1 zone. All we need tonight is minor site plan approval. We don't have notices, notices aren't required. Ahmed is here, still under oath. Take it away.
Are we marking this?
Yes, how many slides? 16 slides, it's a presentation set.
A1. Dated 4/7, A1.
Yes, that's what it is. 221 Nanda Avenue, on Nanda off of Duncan Ave. This is a 440 by 100 sites, 4,000 square feet. This is the rendering of the proposed four-family, three stories. It is in the R1, one and two-family zone. We don't have any variances, the bulk is as of right, the height is as of right. We have four units, but they're split over two, two families basically next to each We meet the required setback of eight foot five, which matches the property next door. The rear yard is again used for the two units on the ground floor. We do have a patio in the back and a green roof in the front and back of the building where there is no mechanical or a roof deck. The front of the building complies with zoning requirements, including the entrance at a level that matches the buildings next door. We are using white cement board panel on the main facade and then the bay windows that come out are composite wood finish. And the back and the sides are, let me see if I can, just give me one second because I skipped this one. The back and sides are siding, white siding to match the white cement board. We have balconies in the back of the project. So all the units have outdoor space, the first, the first floor, the first unit which is on the second floor has the access to the backyard and the balconies and the second floor unit, the third floor unit has balconies and access to the roof deck. These are the four materials that we're proposing, the white cement board on the front facade with the composite wood, the siding is the sides and the back, and the stucco is only on the bulkhead. The layout is there's the two garages on the ground floor and as well as the storage and the mechanical spaces. Entering the pro, the the house on either side, the townhouse on either side, it's it's about four steps here and then there's a landing which matches again the buildings across the, on the street. Typically, what you would see is like the, you know, the stairs that just take you up to the second floor, but instead we have four steps here, landing, and then you enter. Once you enter, you go up the stair. The second floor unit is a three-bedroom unit with access to balconies and it has the recreational space on the ground floor, access to the backyard. The second floor, the third floor unit, I should say, is accessed through the internal stair, again, three bedrooms, balcony, and then an internal stair that takes you up to the roof deck. And this is the project.
Thank you, that concludes our direct testimony.
Any questions from the board? No?
He's going to have two questions.
That's good. He didn't see no balconies. Yeah, so he's good.
There's balconies in the back. You're okay with the balconies in the rear?
That concludes your presentation?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Joseph, we can address any issue in the balconies in the rear with anything falling under that rail?
We we can address that, trash removal, we could, we could do all that.
Don't forget the water heaters.
And the water heaters on the roof, yeah.
Yes, one curb cut for the for the garages and the balconies are in the back, correct?
I think council's just trying to get me over 10 minutes.
At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
There's no public, I move to close.
Sophia? Yes, planning staff would ask that the applicant agree to the conditions written in the memo dated April 3, 2025, which include addressing any comments from review agents.
There are six conditions and those conditions are acceptable.
Okay, with that, staff has no further comments.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion.
And recommends approval, sorry, yes.
Acting Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number P2024-0165 with as presented to our board tonight with the conditions in the staff memo.
Okay, acting vice chair, Dakor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Is this your last application? You've been busy tonight.
If you want to take some more of mine that are in the.
10 minutes or less, yeah. Anyway, I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you.
Good night.
You missed tonight, thank you guys so much.
I'd like to move on to memorialization of resolutions, we have seven for tonight.
Yes, acting chair, we have several resolutions for tonight. Number one, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City adopting a fourth-round housing element and fair share plan. Number two, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Homestead Market LLC for 190-day subdivision filing extension 25 Van Rypen Avenue, 29 Van Rypen Avenue, 608 Pavonia Avenue and 612 Pavonia Avenue, block 7904, lots 1, 2, 14, and 16, case number P2025-0090. Number three, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Matthew Walsh for 190 days subdivision filing extension 213 Congress Street, block 1405, Lot 9, case number P2025-0065. Resolution number four, resolution City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P2024-0184, applicant Kevin Bhattia, address 11 Bostwick Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block 23501, Lot 37. Resolution number five, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Bishop, Bishop Street 78, LLC for extension of final major site plan approval with deviations, 78 Bishop Street, Jersey City, block 15402, Lot 5, case number P2025-0069. Resolution six, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant The Avenue LP, Avenue, NIR West Side Square, LC and West Broadway Corbin LP for amendment to the Fayette Broadway redevelopment, 1072 West Side Avenue, Jersey City Block 9301, Lot 30.01, C0002, case number P2024-0178. Last resolution number seven, resolution of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, applicant NEQ8A LLC for amended final major site plan approval, 20-long slip, two-long slip, Washington Boulevard and River Drive, Jersey City, block 7302, lots 3.18, 3.19, 3.05, and 3.16 to become 3.19, 3.20, 3.21, 3.16, and 3.05, case number P2024-0193.
Do we have a second?
Just, I would just like, actually, we we need to remove that last resolution. That that was added in error, I'm sorry. We we memorialized a resolution and we just failed to get a signature and it just made it back on the list in error. So if we could just remove that last one, the P2024-0193 and take a motion on the rest, I think that would be best.
So acting chair, I would like to remove resolution number seven that I just read, case number P2024-0193.
Acting Chair Kotor.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, all in favor.
Motion to adjourn?
No executive, second, motion to adjourn.